Good evening, everyone. This is the time and place set for the regular January meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. Welcome. I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start by having the commissioners introduce themselves, starting to my right.
Sharla Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Aaron Leal, City Attorney.
Woody Gantina.
Mike Forney, Mayor.
Jim Allison, no title.
And I'm Gary Casado. I'm the chairperson. All right. First order of business is first of all, ask if anybody has anything to add to the agenda tonight. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the December 13th, 2022, meeting minutes. Have the commissioners had a chance to look at this? Have they have questions, comments, motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Support. Second by Mr. Ellison. All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the voice vote, all in favor of approving the minutes from December 13th, 2022. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, so motion passes. All right, moving on to next item, public comment on non-agenda planning items. So if you have, if you're out here in the audience and you'd like to speak on an issue that is not on our agenda, one of our three items on the agenda, and you'd like to come forward and speak, we welcome you to do that. You have three minutes. Do we have anybody who would like to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll move on to new business, which would be, let me make sure I have this, the public hearing on the rezoning of the multiple family residential to PUD SP 23-01-01. Mr. Twain, can you introduce this to us?
Certainly. What you have in front of you is a request to rezone property from multifamily residential to planned unit development. The site is located on the southeast corner of South Troy Street and East Fifth Street. The petitioner is proposing, as indicated, to change the zoning district to those. He's also proposing to demolish the existing building that's onsite, which includes five dwelling units in a, in a single building, and construct a new four-level building that contains 27 studio and one-bedroom multifamily units on the second, third, and fourth floor, or fourth levels. On the ground level would be some space for a small incubator business, as well as onsite parking. The petitioner is also planning in their narrative to construct this building so that it is a net-zero type building. What those features would include, based on their narrative, is the north-south building orientation, thicker walls with continuous exterior insulation, LED lighting, energy recovery ventilation, rooftop solar panels, drought-resistant landscaping, and Energy Star Green building certification. The petitioner is also proposing that five of the residential units would be reserved for workforce-type housing. That's kind of the overview of the developer's proposal. Terms of some of the zoning ordinance deviations on, on the proposed plan that you'll have to consider as part of your review are in relation to, first, the site corner clearances and setbacks. You'll find those all listed in a table on page six of the report. But what that refers to is the requirement for 10-foot clear zone at the entrance exits to the building. You'll see those identified on your site plan in the ground level in terms of the yellow triangles. There's a 10-foot clearance requirement there, and the petitioner is proposing that that not be included. They've included some reasoning as to why that is, and when they do their presentation, I believe they've got some pictures of that as well. Next is in terms of the minimum lot size. For 27 units, you would need 84,000 square feet. For the three that are allowed, because the site is only 12,122 square feet. The next deviation is in regards to the building height. It's proposed at 44 feet to the roof line. The ordinance allows 36 feet. The next one listed is in regards to setbacks. Setbacks are required at 25 feet, and again, this is at your discretion whether this applies under the ordinance. What they're proposing is zero at the west front yard setback along Troy Street, as well as zero along the north side yard setback, and then the rear east side yard setback would be at 6 feet. The other setbacks from the south all comply with 25 feet. The ordinance also requires a minimum landscaping of 10% of the site, or approximately 1,200 square feet. Based on their landscape plan, they have approximately 400 square feet. The next one is in regards to the location of parking itself, and you'll notice that it is proposed at the property line along East Fifth Street and South Troy Street. It is required to be back at 25 feet, less than your discretion. You granted it something less than that. The last deviation that we've listed in the report is in regards to the number of off-street parking spaces. The ordinance requires two per unit. The petitioner is proposing one or 27 units, or 27 parking spaces onsite. As I, as you said, this is a request to rezone from multifamily to planned unit development. Your options under that, this is a recommendation to the City Commission, the two options there are to recommend under the preliminary review, which would allow them to come back within six months with a final site plan to this body, or you could consider, if you didn't need any additional information or discretionary items, as a final PUD with a recommendation going directly to the City Commission based on the submitted plans. You will find the staff contingencies listed. Depending on which way you want to go, I can get into those later, but I'll stop with that overview. If there's questions on that, I'd be happy to address them. And as I said, the petitioner does have a slide presentation they'd like to go through with you as well.
All right, question by Commissioner Douglas.
No, actually, just a comment. Mr. Twain, in your table, in the one, two, third column, the maximum building height, you've got listed at 30 feet when it's actually 36, right?
Correct. In the narrative, you'll see it's.
It's correct there.
Correct in the narrative. There's a typo based probably on use of an old table.
Yeah.
Questions from Mr. Twain? Okay, I have a quick question, just procedurally. I'm sorry, I know we've gone through this before, but so this is a PUD. Are we, we have a public hearing on the PUD because it's a rezoning. Are we treating the site plan in the same decision, or are those two different decisions?
It's one decision in that the site plan is attached to the PUD recommendation. So you're, when you get a special land use request, you have two separate actions, but under the rezoning request, it's one action. You're recommending the rezoning with a specific site plan, so it's one action.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions before we call the petitioner up? All right, let's do that now. Is the petitioner present? And would you please come forward and tell us why you are entitled and the relief you seek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. First off, Happy New Year to all, back at business with the Planning Commission, which is a good thing. And it's good to see three projects that are being proposed in the city, because if you look around at many neighboring cities, they don't have the activity that Royal Oak has. In fact, many meetings of planning commissions have been canceled in the past several months because of the lack of activity in other communities. So the city, I think, should be commended for that, as well as our residents. So, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make my letter to the Planning Commission part of the record that was presented earlier electronically.
Is it part of the record already? Do we have to make some sort of motion?
No, it's attached to the write-up at the end of it. So done.
Thank you very much. My name is Dennis Cowan with the firm Plunkett Cooney, and I represent Carbon on Troy, which is proposing a 27-unit apartment building within walking distance of our meeting tonight at Troy and Fifth Streets. With me this evening are the two principals, Jeff Julius and Tim Palmer, as well as representatives, Jason Krieger and Ray Phillips from Royal Oak-based Krieger Clatt Architects. All of them will be speaking. I'm kind of batting leadoff to set the stage, so to speak. First, the proposed structure is more than just an apartment building. It will set the standard for environmental sustainability and green infrastructure in Royal Oak, being the first ever near-net-zero building in our community. This will include solar panels, water efficiencies, heating efficiencies, among many other features that I listed in my letter, and that will be discussed in our presentation. In addition, the developers are reserving approximately 20% of the units, or five units, for workforce housing, which we know is an important city goal. Carbon on Troy takes very seriously not only the PUD guidelines and standards in the ordinance, but also the community benefit guidelines, which were adopted by the City Commission late last year. We believe, as my letter points out, as well as in our presentation, that we meet and exceed both the PUD guidelines and the community benefit guidelines. We believe the building is consistent in terms of size and height with many other buildings along the three-block Troy Street corridor south of Fourth Street, including the AT&amp;T Building right across the street, St. Paul's Church, the Hazelton, which is under construction, and two other condominium buildings being 610 and 614 Troy Street. Being part, or being on the perimeter, excuse me, of the downtown district, this building will be a very desirable location, promoting walkability in our community and for our tenants to visit our city's downtown stores, restaurants, and businesses. We did hold a neighborhood meeting last Thursday at the Royal Oak Public Library. We sent out 75 invites. We had four residents in attendance. We listened to both compliments and criticisms, but more importantly, we had an opportunity to dialogue with our neighbors. So at this time, I'm going to turn the baton over to our two principals, Tim Palmer and Jeff Julius, for a brief statement, and then on to the presentation by Krieger Clatt. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello. My name is Jeff Julius. I'm one of the principals of 20 Terra. And over the last 10 years, I've utilized the Masters in Construction Management, Real Estate Development, to build over 100 different developments in 20 different states. And while my work has taken me across the country, I'm excited and honored to be here today in a city that I was born in and have lived here for 15 years. It's an honor to present a project that we believe will set the standard for new developments in the city and bring what we believe is the first net-zero multifamily structure to southeastern Michigan.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tim Palmer. I have a bit of a different background than Jeff. I grew up not too far from here. My mom was a firefighter in Royal Oak for nearly 20 years. My dad and stepmom still live in the, in the city. I left in 2007 to go to college, graduated and joined the military, worked in special operations for just under eight years, where a medical diagnosis forced me into separation or retirement. From there, I, I went to Stanford, Stanford to gain a master's degree through their engineering school with a focus on energy in the built environment. And it was there I encountered multiple developers who were deploying a lot of the same strategies that, that we're trying to deploy to great effect. And I kind of saw that, and I wanted to move home and bring it to the metro Detroit area. So I partnered with Jeff, slide please, to, to, we founded our firm 20 Terra, which is sort of, you know, built at the, started at the intersection of construction and energy, and with the intent of pushing the construction industry forward and just creating better buildings that are, and we'll dive into the details later on, on why they are better, but just that is the, the mission that we are sort of on. Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Krieger with Krieger Clatt Architects, 2120 East 11 Mile. Ray Phillips is the lead design on the project. He's here in case I misstep on anything I say. So, all right, so we're going to take you through the architectural presentation, basically walk you through the building. As we go through this, there will be some items that go back to the near-net-zero aspects. We'll let Tim and Jeff field those. But I do want to start by saying that since, since we first met, well, I've known Jeff Julius for many years. We used to design some of the daycare centers that he built. I'm going back, shoot, probably 10 years ago at least. And then met Tim through Jeff. And while we were interviewing for the project, right out of the gate, the whole thing was net-zero and near-net-zero. And they were citing different locations in Royal Oak, and it was always the same thing that they were, they wanted to make sure was consistent with their projects, is that the broad side of the building faced south, which is what, I think there was some comments on that, and we can discuss that. And then they also wanted to really dial in the mechanicals, as well as even the passive systems with the insulation, the glazing, things like that. So we're going to touch on some of these items. Again, we'll let Tim take it farther. And then what we brought, if anybody's interested, is a handout from a MEP company who specializes in this, and they have kind of like the, I guess you'd call it like the roadmap or the game plan, correct, right? In order to achieve the near-net-zero. So for anybody who wants to see that, we're happy to hand those out. Well, I think we'll start with the architectural presentation, and we'll, we'll just kind of go from there. So I think everybody knows where the site is, right at the corner of Fifth and Troy. That building's been there for a very long time, and it's nice to see it potentially get redeveloped. Next slide, please. So these are some of the project facts. Tim touched on all of them, you know, four-story building, 27 residential units, and 10 workforce housing units? Five workforce housing units. Next slide. So this is the architectural site plan. North is straight up on the sheet. You can see there's Troy on the left, and the fifth is along the top. So the dark boxes, those represent conditioned spaces on the ground floor. The light gray represents the building up above. So we're parking partially underneath the building, and then part of the parking is outside of the building. The idea here is that the open area is to the south, and you can drive in off of Troy. And on the southeast corner is where we have our dumpsters. So the idea is that the major loading, unloading, trash pickup, those types of things, they come off of Troy, which is the more major street. We do have a drive that goes off to the north, that goes off to Fifth. That right there is intended to be exit only, and we could sign it and, and try and control it so that it's left turn only. I, I know from living down the street for many years, I've moved since, but if somebody leaves that site, they're going to go to Troy, they're going to go to Fourth, or they're going to go south down to Lincoln. No one's going to cut through the subdivision, because there's really nothing there unless it's your friend. There, your friend. Go back up, please, real quick. Ah, that's fine. You're good. Go back to the floor plan. Perfect. Thank you. So this is the ground floor plan. It's very similar to the architectural site plan that you just saw. It's just really showing you the different spaces within the building on the hard corner. That's at, I guess, like office-type space. And you can see the vertical circulation, the cores, the elevator, the stairs. And then you have a little bit better, more clearer picture of the, of the parking lot. Excellent. The next, I think, four slides, it's really just the upper-level floor plans. It's a double-loaded corridor, one beds and studios. You can go through those. You'll see on the elevations that right now, we're proposing no windows on the east, and the idea is to block any kind of views to the neighbors or trying to safeguard them from any kind of, you know, anybody looking down into their yards. You know, we could look at doing transom windows for some fenestration, things of that nature, but right now, we don't have anything proposed there. This is a roof plan, and we have some renderings later on that might make it a little bit easier to read, but those are solar panels that are up on the roof. The actual number of solar panels, I believe they're still being figured out, but our engineers calculated the amount that we would need, right? Based, you know, so we know what we have to do. We have to still dial in on the exact number based on, I guess, the one that's picked. That's not my specialty, as it is. So then we have some elevations, and the renderings will depict them a little bit better, but they're high-quality materials. We have brick, cast stone, we have hardy siding up above, and then we'll have, you know, either aluminum or vinyl windows on the building. Okay, next slide, please. And then really quick, you can see on the ground floor there that there are those, like the open grills, and we have a better illustration later on. But at the drives that are going out, and also, I guess both of them that are going out, with the triangle, vision, vision triangle that we're, that we're, we're actually not meeting, we have windows there so that folks, as you're driving up, you can still see people walking. And then there's also a slide later on that will show some of like the audible devices that we could place on the building if need be. This is a building section, which is just showing the stacking plan. You have the common areas on the ground floor, the residents up above. Next slide. So this right here is a slide I'm sure that you've all seen before, and it's showing, you know, walking distance within roughly five to eight-minute travel distance from the site. We just wanted to illustrate how many surface parking lots and also parking deck, you know, the parking deck, which is the new parking deck just north of the Henry Ford Building. So there is parking available, there's also on-street parking. Next slide, please. So this is an example of other situations that are very similar to this, where as you leave, you don't have the true vision triangle, recognize the main north loft and then sky loft. And then we've also recently, Billings Place had the same issue, and that's, that was built a few years ago, and also Elevate, which just opened up, gosh, I think it was end of last year, the same condition. So this slide right here is addressing the height. This proposed project abuts single-family residential, it's four stories. And then recently, maybe, probably five or six years ago now, Kinetic Creations was, was built. And even though it's a three-story building, the heights are taller because they're commercial. And this building is, I believe, three feet taller than Kinetic Creations. And what we wanted to show is that Kinetic Creations, it's a good precedent, because it abuts single-family, it's almost the exact distance away from single-family, and it's nearly the same height. And if you were to walk or drive it, it's, it's not, you know, it's not like oppressive. It's, it's actually kind of fades away, and I think it's a good use, especially along a busier street. Next slide, please. So we did a study, like Dennis mentioned, looking at the neighboring buildings along Troy and their heights. So Troy's a pretty busy street. You have the Hazelton, which is being constructed right now, and that's roughly 74 feet. Next to it, which has been there for probably 15 years, are the Troy Street lofts. We don't have a dimension on it, but I'm guessing, I don't know, 50 feet, 54? The fire department, you know, you can see it, church, AT&amp;T Building, these are all buildings that are right along Troy. So our thought is, as you travel down Troy Street, this will fall in line with all the other buildings that are currently there. Next slide. So I'm going to hand this over to Tim. There's a few slides that he's going to go over, and then we're going to wrap it up with some renderings, just to show the other views of the building, and then we'll be available for questions.
Okay, so I'm just going to touch real quick on some of the, the benefits to net-zero and the, kind of the major, you know, categories that we see to building this way. First and foremost is tenant comfort and tenant health. It's, these charts kind of show, all pointing to a very similar illustration, that's a widely accepted idea that indoor air quality plays a massive role in people's lives. And improved indoor, indoor air quality is linked with better cognitive function, mood, energy, productivity, and sickness levels. And to go net-zero, you need to seal the envelope, you know, completely air-seal it so that you can control the air exchange on your own terms. So by doing this, it allows us to, you know, ventilate properly, bring in air that we can filter if we need to, and, and provide that for tenants. And people walk into these buildings and they say, they just, they feel different, they feel cleaner, they feel crisper, they feel a little more awake, and that's, that's what we want to deliver. Slide, please. Next is kind of looking at the environmental grid, carbon footprint picture, and any building, if you bring it out over its lifetime, 40, 50-plus years, a majority of the carbon footprint comes from the building's operation day-to-day, heating, cooling, ventilating, hot water, et cetera. So, you know, our design is, is based on that and investing a little more upfront to, to improve the lifetime footprint. And when you design these buildings, it's not just about, you know, maximizing solar. Solar panels are made in China, using coal-fired energy and shipped across the world. They're, they're not that efficient. Our focus is first and foremost on the demand and decreasing demand through smart design and through efficient use of space. And then we, you know, once we have an idea of, of the load, then we can factor in solar and size it accordingly to net-zero or as close to net-zero as possible, given our limitations on rooftop space. Finally, is kind of for investors. This is, you can go to the next slide. That's on all-electric. Next slide. Yep. Okay, so for investors, there's a, a lot of people think you can't build this way, it's too expensive. There's a gentleman named Taichi Ono, who, if you don't know who he is, he's probably impacted everyone in this room's lives as much as anyone else. He is the creator of the, of the just-in-time manufacturing process. He's sort of a god in the manufacturing world. He helped create, he helped build Toyota into, you know, one of the most successful companies ever, and his whole philosophy was based on, on MUDA, which is Japanese for waste. And he thought waste was a huge drag in any system or process, and the more you could eliminate waste, the more profitable, efficient, better system would become. Well, in the built environment, there's a lot of waste to, to manage and cut away. And our belief is that there's value beyond just the utility costs or that, that the numbers you see on a financial statement upfront, that, that we intend to pass on to our, our investors, stickier, stickier tenants, lower maintenance, better insurance rates, tax incentives, et cetera. So those are kind of the, the three staples of the net-zero in our strategy, and I think I'm going back over to you.
I think this slide we're supposed to wrap it up. Anyway, so, Ray, can you just, why don't you pass this out really quick there? So the next, I think, five slides are really just renderings of the site. So this right here is looking, you'd be looking southeast, if you're standing at the, at the corner of Fifth, of Fifth and Troy, slides. This here would be looking northeast, so you could see parking lots there on the south. You could drive under the building. Next slide, please. This is a view from the south, looking at the building, looking west. I'm sorry, east looking west. This slide right here depicts the view inside with the openings. So those open grills, the, the wall is tall enough to meet the ordinance to screen the parking, but then it's open up above. So the idea there is to, you know, let people see pedestrians walking by. Next slide, please. Next slide? All right. It's a view from the parking lot. Next slide. And then I think that's, maybe one more. So there's another view from the south, looking northeast, and then that's the last slide. All right, thank you. Anything, Ray, you want to add?
No.
Okay.
Is that the conclusion of your presentation?
Yes, the conclusion.
Okay. Very good. Are there questions from the commissioners from the, for the petitioner before we move on to public comment? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing, so what we'd like to do is, I already see a hand up there. If you'd like to speak on this issue, come forward, and you have three minutes. Please introduce yourself for the record, and I saw your hand up, so you're first.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Frank Arden. Good to see you all tonight. I live at 326 East Fifth Street. Many of you know me, but just in case you don't, I've been living in Royal Oak since 1997, 25 years. An architect just retired at the beginning of this year. I've been an architect since 1983. I have a master's degree in architecture from Columbia University with sort of a minor in urban design. Our house is two houses away from this, to the east. The proposal is an interesting one, and everybody who knows me knows that I'm not against higher-dense housing in Royal Oak. But this particular piece of property is a transitional piece of property. It's not in the central business district, according to the, both the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And so being a transition building, it doesn't correspond to the buildings that the developers comparing it to, which are actually on the other side of the street in the central business district. This building is on the east side of Troy. Those buildings were on the west side of Troy. And so it's not a fair comparison, and it's a little disingenuous to use those. And so, it's not a fair comparison, and it's a little disingenuous to use those as a comparison. Additionally, the building that they used to compare it as a building next to residential buildings on Fourth Street, there's a big difference. The big difference is that that building is a parking lot away from the residential backyards. This building is five feet away from residential side yards to the east of it. It's very much closer to the residential than that building on Fourth Street. So, again, I think that's a disingenuous comparison and shouldn't be, shouldn't be used. Regardless, the big problem with this building is, is the big problem, it's too big. It's a transition building, it's not a building in the central business district. It isn't a, central business district is zero-lot-line zoning, this is not. I can't imagine it ever being zero-lot-line zoning in this particular transitional area. More comparable than a buildings that work well as transition might be the townhouses designed by Schneider Smith between Sixth and Seventh Street on Troy, on the same side as this, and opposite those larger buildings that he was talking about. Those are adequate and interesting and good transition buildings. I did a few studies of this site, and I know that developers are challenged because they have to make money, and they need that many units probably to make money. Nonetheless, I've done a couple of studies which show better-sized transition, I got 15 units and 14 units. One is a townhouse version, one is a building much like this, but pushed closer to the Troy Street. I have them here, and I'd like to pass them out.
Sure. I have a copy for everybody. Didn't know we had a beeper. Thanks, Ray. Do you want to hand them at the end? We'll pass them out.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else want to speak from the public on this issue? I see a hand up there from the back row, or second from back row, if you will. Again, introduce yourself, please. You'll have three minutes, and now, we know you're gonna get beeped at the end.
My name's Mike Stevens, and a couple months ago, I bought the house between his and this big building. I'm at 318 East Fifth Street, one of the three condos that backs from the street there. And quite frankly, this is a horror story to me. Now, I will see that building from my kitchen, from my living room, and from my bedroom. It's a big, black, or big, you know, big barge-y building, and I'm very, very much opposed to this. It's not why I bought into, I bought into a neighborhood. There are other multi-unit things in the neighborhood, but they're well-disguised, a couple, just a couple streets, a couple houses down, there's one that goes back from the street, that you don't really notice if you aren't looking for it. This, and I was gonna bring up what he did too, the buildings they're comparing are all the other side of Troy. So, this just doesn't fit in this neighborhood at all. It's a neighborhood mostly of private homes, a couple of condos like mine, which is a two-story condo, and it's a neighborhood of private homes. This thing doesn't belong there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, right here in the second row?
Good evening. My name's Ken Waskowski, and I'm here representing St. Paul Lutheran Church, which is directly across the street at 202 East Fifth Street. Also, the two residences directly south of this property at 513 and 519 Troy Street. I'm the congregation's vice president, representing roughly 600 members in the congregation, many of which are Royal Oak residents. I want you to know that membership at St. Paul have no objections to the improvements adjacent to and across the street from our properties. However, we do have concerns with, about the rezoning of the subject property from, to a planned unit development from a multifamily. The quality standards in a multifamily zoning are clearly stated and included in the zoning ordinance. The density, site coverage, height limits, setback, visibility requirements, unit size, and parking requirements are all clearly defined. We're concerned that with the standards, these standards are gonna be compromised if you don't, if the zoning is changed from what it currently is. In the, in Article 4 of the zoning ordinance, under General Building Design and Project Compatibility, item 770-381, it states, "The intent of this section is to ensure that the physical characteristics of the proposed new building construction are compatible with, when considered within the context of the surrounding area." And I point out again, and I know it's been said here already, that all the residential properties along the east side of Troy Street, from Campbell to 11 Mile, are complying with the existing codes, and of a different character than this proposed development. We believe that the character here should be maintained to what it is currently. The, it's a soft border, if you will, between the west, the central business district, and the residential districts to the east of it. We at St. Paul are particularly concerned with two elements. One of them is the zero setback, being a public safety concern. The other is that there's only 27 parking units in this. We're concerned that this is going to compromise what we already have as a compromised situation from the intensity of use in the downtown district on our particular lots. We try to be a good neighbor with our community and make it a welcome community. We're a good neighbor with the fire department, who we allow already to use some of our spaces, our parking and our dumpster space for it. We would like you to maintain the current standards at least, even if you change the zoning.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. All right. Other members of the public would like to speak on this PUD. All right, I actually don't see any more hands, so I'm gonna close the public comment on this petition, and bring it back to the side of the table, and ask our commissioners if we have more questions for the petitioners, for Mr. Twing, discussion about this project. Mr. Gantina?
So, I've got a couple of questions regarding, I guess, enforcement of execution of a project like this. With it being a PUD, different than other projects where conditions of approval for, say, the special land use or site plan approval, there are specific conditions of approval that go into that approval, which sort of dictate what's required. In this particular case, because I know there's been potential issues in the past with other projects, with a PUD, is it conditioned the same way that other projects would be conditioned as we would propose an approval for it? Or is it different because it's a PUD in the sense that what is stated in the PUD agreement that would ultimately be signed, or what's been given to us in the design that's here, is that essentially what dictates the quote-unquote "conditions" on the project in order to be able to enforce those later on? If that makes sense?
Well, I'll attempt to answer it, and if I don't, then you can clarify for me. You will see in the planning staff report, there are conditions that you should consider in reviewing the request for the PUD, and whether it meets those or doesn't meet those. So, that's part of the review. It's different than a conditional rezoning, where you do have the opportunity here to either accept what's being offered, or modify it with additional conditions or changes, because it's a planned unit development. The conditional rezoning, that you'll see in a few minutes, the second item, it's basically what they're offering, voluntarily offering, and you're limited in what you can, you either accept it or reject it. This one, you've got some leeway to negotiate a better project, that's why you could do it as a preliminary PUD, and ask them to come back with a revision within the next six months?
So, I guess my question, then, to state it more simply, is because it's a PUD, is there the potential that what's being presented to us today does not make it into the final project, should this get approved and ultimately be built?
No, you're, again, making a recommendation to the city commission. If it gets approved based on all the conditions and the submissions, the planning department's recommendations, and your recommendations, if the city commission accepts all of those and approves it, they have to build what's approved. They can't take stuff out, they can't add to it, they can't...
So, there, I guess therein lies my concern or my question, in the sense that, and this is no fault of theirs, there are certain elements of the project that simply aren't fully developed enough yet, to be able to make a decision that, yes, that's what we want, or what we don't want. I don't expect them to fully design that out just yet. My concern is, as it goes through the approval process, because there's some of that ambiguity within some aspects of the project, that once those get finalized, for whatever reason, it's really not consistent with what was approved at the end of the day, but because there was no specificity, there's sort of an "out," I guess, at the end of the day. That's my concern, is that there's gray areas of what's being proposed, again, by no fault of their own, they just haven't developed the product enough yet. How does that, I mean, how are we gonna handle that, I guess, is the question at the end of the day? And I'm not sure there was a right answer.
Well, I'm not sure which ones you're referring to as being gray areas. If they're saying it's gonna be a LEED-certified building, very similar to the previous LEED-certified building, they're gonna have to show that it's LEED-certified before we'll give them an occupancy permit. So, I, if that's one of the gray areas, it's like any building at the site plan review process, though, it hasn't, you don't have construction documents in front of you. They have indicated that the number of solar panels may change based on what their engineer proposes. You know, I'll use the marijuana facilities as an example, that had to have solar panels and green infrastructure as part of those. We required them to put exactly the number they showed on the plan. So, if they're concerned, they should probably, between this meeting and the city commission meeting, work that to a number that is a final number, because once it's blessed, it's not gonna get cut from 50 to 30. So, yes, it's, some of that is indicated here, but again, your overall recommendation to the city commission is, is this site acceptable for a 27-unit apartment building with these parameters to it, and we'll refine that as it goes forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I gotta follow up on that, because I, what do you, this is where I thought you were going, maybe it's not. So, we have, first of all, all design is theory, right? You're saying, I'm gonna have a net zero building, because I'm gonna have better glazing, I'm gonna have better windows, I'm gonna have better insulation. I don't know if we have in here, maybe I'm gonna look at, is there a window schedule? Do we know that that window is going to be in conformance with the math that allows this to be a net zero building? And if that's what the community benefit is, then it's very relevant for what we're doing right here, because we have to weigh the community benefits against granting a PUD. So, that's what I thought your question was going.
Well, I guess I'll get into it a little bit more, and surprisingly, I have a lot of consternation about this project, because on one hand, I really do commend you for offering up the amenities that you are offering up on this building. I have concern over the, what I'll term as the loose usage of the term "net zero" or "near-net-zero" building. It looks like you have done some initial calculations on the loading, to be able to help you sort of size the PV system on the roof. From a net zero perspective, though, I'm just, I've got concerns that this building's not gonna get there, only because where we are in southeast Michigan, with DTE being our public utility, one of the only ways to truly get to net zero in our area is to have storage capacity as well. The size of the system that would need to be on that roof to get to true net zero at the end of the day, for a building of that size, the math just isn't working out to me. So, that's sort of where my questions come up at the end of the day, is what's being proposed is using the terminology of net zero or near-net zero. We really don't have a lot of ways to sort of, to your LEED certification example. It's hard for us to enforce that, or to make sure that it gets executed at the end of the day. I make these comments with a caveat that what you're proposing, I think, is great in the sense that it's above code, it's beyond what a traditionally-built building would be built as. But to the chair's point, if the fact this is a net zero building with these amenities is sort of the primary driver of why this should be considered for a PUD, I've got some concerns in that area, and that's why I just want to make sure that if we do have a positive outcome for the applicant in terms of moving this thing forward, that we make sure that the elements that are being proposed and the way that they're being discussed are in fact incorporated into the product at the end of the day, and we're not simply using terminology that we know will be viewed favorably by this board. Just some of my concerns at this point.
Well, I would just follow that up, and you do have the opportunity to review it as a preliminary review, giving them the understanding that, again, a 27-unit building of 44 feet in height with 27 parking spaces is acceptable to you, provided you provide additional detail showing how you're going to meet net zero. Do you want a window schedule? Do you want, what would you be looking for? And they would have to provide it within the next six months for you to deal with a final. So, you could ask and simply deal with it as a preliminary level, and get more information within the next six months before you give a final recommendation.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, those are definitely legitimate concerns, Mr. Gantina, and I agree with you. I mean, if we, if that's a consideration, net zero for any commissioner up here, and we ultimately make that decision heavily based on the community benefits, I would think, to Mr. Twing's point, that's a huge financial risk for the developer, because if they don't do anything that they say in the drawings, or they don't meet the certification, then they have a building that isn't gonna get built, or they have, you know, money tied up in a half-built building, and they have to make it work. So, maybe what the answer is, is that if this does go through before it gets to the city commission, is that maybe one suggestion, if that's a concern, is to have a little bit better definition, or like what the certification plan is for net zero by the time, you know, they put a shovel in the ground, and that, you know, our planning department would accept that as, you know, whatever that standard is. Because I know there's LEED, LEED is pretty, everyone knows LEED, it's a set of standards, you can get certified. Net zero, I'm not sure if that's just a simple calculation, or if there's some sort of authentication that can go along with it.
There's both, but I wouldn't necessarily want to force the applicant into getting a certification that isn't necessary. I think a percent energy offset is an easy calculation to be able to provide. Obviously, in a net zero perspective, 100% offset would be that calculation, but again, I don't want my comments to be deemed as negative towards what's been proposed. I think what you have proposed and what you are offering up are far and above what we normally see in terms of community benefits that are proposed in projects. My concern is that it's, that it's not just simply verbiage being proposed to get approval, to then move on and build a different project, is really where my concern lies.
Yeah. Mr. Ellison?
I think a PUD is one of the best tools we've got to help improve the advancement of our community. I know we've used it many, many times in the past, and it's usually worked out good, very few problems. In this particular case, what they are delivering us is a residential unit, 27 units, they're studios, they're one bedroom, so they're not designed for a big family, they're designed for probably single use, much like the ones on 11 Mile Road down at Melton Dean or Gainesboro is, and those have been very successful. But he promises us a net zero building on this, and that's great. To me, it rules back, if we approve this at net zero, this is gonna be a performance-driven spec. So that if you're gonna give us a net zero, give us a net zero. It may not be exactly the material here, and I'm looking at the sheet we just got from the mechanical electrical engineer, it's very detailed. I don't know if this is gonna accomplish their goals, but if the goal is net zero, use this, use something else, but just deliver us what we're looking for. And, you know, it's so early in the process right now, we don't have construction drawings, and the engineers have probably not worked out all the details, but if they consider, can continue to acknowledge that this is net zero, and that's the goal, and we're not gonna let them build it unless it is, then I think that's what our hammer is.
All right. Other comments? Mr. Gantina? All right, other comments? Mr. Gantina?
No, go ahead, I'm enjoying your perspective.
Well, I do want to be fair to the applicant in that, and this is actually one of the questions I initially had coming into this, is in the packet that we've got, the terminology in some cases is a little bit different. And to be fair to the applicant, near-net-zero, I think, is the terminology that they would probably prefer. Really, from the standpoint of, they just don't know where they're going to be at the end of the day, which is fair. In other parts of the packet, it was referred to as a net-zero building. Another point of clarification, we're speaking about net-zero energy. Because there's other forms of net-zero projects that can be proposed. I'm assuming that that's what's being proposed, is a net-zero energy building. And that's really sort of where my concerns lie, is, again, there's many other things that they're offering, but, you know, the really, what is around the idea of a net-zero building is what they're hanging their hat on for consideration for this PUD. And there, it's not 100% clear to me. Are they offering up a net-zero energy building? Because there are several ways to validate that. Are they offering up a near-net-zero building? Because that's very ambiguous. We don't really, to your point, that's where I have concern about the hammer that we really have at the end of the day.
Can I comment on that right now?
I think so.
Sure, yes, please proceed.
Mr. Gantina, that's a great question. And I'm glad you asked it. If I were your position, I would be asked the exact same thing. Probably not quite as plainly. Because I'm sure a lot of developers do come up and promise these things and then as it comes to the approval process and CDs get put out, they slowly chip away at them. My partner's goal is to move the industry forward. Just for clarification, net zero doesn't mean we're off the grid, we're utilizing all of our energy demand via the solar we're producing. It just means that at the end of the year, and we'll offer full transparency, we'll know exactly how much we produce and how much we consume, that those two equal out. Now, we kind of change it to near-net-zero because we would much rather under-promise and over-deliver than promise net zero and we use 6,000 kilowatt-hours extra during the year. And now, you know what, we've lied or misled you guys. We don't want to do that. Our goal is to make this as efficient as possible and to bring it as close to net zero as possible. But we have a few limitations. Obviously, sizing of solar is one. And we're looking at possibly introducing carports, solar-covered carports, with a partner firm in ours from Texas who does just that. We're looking at, you know, we're pulling every single lever we know how in the process, in the building design. We've done high-level modeling with a tool that shows, hey, we're very close. But quite frankly, the next step in like a very detailed model is a $14,000 investment that we prefer to make as we're further down the line to get a very, very, you know, good idea of where we're going to land. But you've also, you have variable, variables that you can't necessarily control, occupant behavior, et cetera. I won't dive into those. But we have set this goal, like with the intent, to just move things forward and kind of show people what's doable. Whether or not, you know, we get there or we get very close to near-net-zero, to us is kind of irrelevant. I don't think DTE is going to come knocking on our door because we use 6,000 kilowatt-hours of theirs. We are, you know, and this is also iteration number one. This is something, this is a strategy we want to launch and continue to build upon and get better at it. And continue to learn different tricks, methods, construction techniques and materials that will help us do this. So, you know, you have, I guess, at the moment, our word, but that's kind of worthless in this context. But just the goal that this is where we want to be. And, you know, we will offer full transparency and we will also be willing to show you our numbers in the modeling as we get further down the road and kind of where our mechanical engineers have us coming in. But that is the reason for going from near, or net zero to near-net zero. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ellison.
Question for you, before you get too far away. Is there an interesting definition of net zero or near-net zero? I know in my history in the construction industry, we always had, things had tolerances. It had to be within a certain range of 0 to minus .5 on, you know, whatever the item was. So if we've defined this as net zero, is that absolute zero? Or can it be, you know, minus 1 or plus 2 or something that falls within a range of what net zero is?
For all intents and purposes, there is a range. Technically speaking, it is, now, you've produced as much or more energy than you've consumed. But developers I know who have accomplished this, they build the building and then it often takes a little bit of time of tweaking schedules, equipment, educating the occupants on various behaviors they need to tweak. So there's just, there are moving pieces within the process. But in terms of the actual rating, there's over 100 different energy-related rating agencies. LEED is one of many. And to us, a lot of them are just bureaucracies that eat up our time and capital, where we'd rather be putting it towards the building envelope, towards solar, towards different appliances, things like that. So our focus is the energy use and the energy production. And again, I can offer full transparency into the entire process for you all so we can sort of learn together in a way. But that's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up?
Sure.
So is it fair to say that net zero and near-net zero are basically the same thing? Unless there's a standard within near-net zero that is bigger than the standard within net zero?
I'm not even sure if there is a, if there is a regulatory body that is coming to look at utilities, you know.
We're going with this, we, as a group, we approve this, we need to decide what is net zero. Is it the absolute zero? Or is it, you know, allowing a variance of a certain percentage? Because if we make an absolute net zero, then that's what you're going to have to do.
Right, but the best we can do, sir, is model it before construction and get a very good idea within 5% or 10% of the use and the solar production. And then a year or two years into the project, we know what the actual use is.
That's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to give us some flexibility so that we don't get hung up on semantics here of numbers. You didn't make this number so you didn't follow the procedure or you didn't meet the goal. But if we can, you know, allow this, that, you know, your goal is net zero or near-net zero, that gives you the opportunity to let it play itself out once you get all your studies back in and see where it is and see if it's dramatically wrong, then we need to fix it. If it's not dramatically wrong, then it's, you know, it's probably okay. I'm just trying to make it easier for the process.
I understand.
Commissioner Douglas.
So it seems to me that net zero is their bragging thing. I mean, they're doing this because if their building succeeds, they're going to use it as a model for the next one, as part of their business model. But for us as a community, when we say we want energy-efficient buildings, we do this to serve the people of our city and we do this to serve the planet. So if this building winds up being net .5 or net 1, they still will have achieved a substantial benefit for the community and for the climate. So I'm just, I'm not worried about splitting hairs and, you know, calling them into question a year after it's built to say, "Well, you know, are you net 1.5?" I just, I think they propose something that's beneficial to the community and I'm not inclined to split hairs over it.
Other comments, sir?
Follow up, I'm kind of, I want to apologize that I even brought up the topic of the net-zero terminology for a second. Because there is a difference between near-net zero and net zero. But the reality is, to Commissioner Douglas's point, if you achieve either of those thresholds, it's a commendable achievement. So I don't, you know, again, I apologize for us kind of banning this term or this discussion around. Because if we take that, set that term aside for a second, the inclusion of the PV panels on the roof, the increased efficiency in the building envelope, the way that you're actually going to deliver the building with some of, with the five workforce housing units. I believe you've got some workforce training as part of the plan as well, working with the local school. Just take the net-zero term out of it for a second. There's still many, many things that are being brought to the table that will significantly improve the performance of that building versus a traditionally-built building of the same design and character. So I apologize for the whole net-zero discussion, I do think it was important.
It was a net-positive discussion.
Okay, I think it was important, too. I would just, I'll pipe up, I want to respond there. Yes, the net zero is, I would agree with Commissioner Douglas, but the net zero is also only one issue. Because we also have the massing and the relationship with the other properties, the setbacks, the height, the egress on Fifth. I mean, there's a number of things that I think need to be discussed and I think that I would agree with Commissioner Douglas. If you're going to make something better than it would be, then that's beneficial. I've got other things to talk about, too. In fact, I would like to ask a question of the petitioner. Is there any reason that you need to be on the lot line to be net zero or near-net zero? How does that factor in? Or does it?
Yes, sir, our decision to be on the lot line is largely born out of the costs associated with improving the building envelope and making the economics work and the number of spaces work to afford things like 70 kilowatts of photovoltaic or R45 shell or air ceiling the building. So these, all these things incur upfront costs and it's just, they're capital-intensive. And the more units and leasable square footage we can provide, the more doable the project becomes. At some point, we can no longer do it because obviously, we're not going to commence a project that we know is going to lose money.
Okay, economically driven, that's the answer.
Largely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions, questions for the petitioners? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, if I, so our zoning ordinance requires, this is not zoning, but nevertheless, 10% of the lot coverage be open space. And here you are quite a bit beneath that. Is there a way we can get there? Applicant.
I'll wait for you to get a break. Okay. So is the open space that was included, did that include the space up behind the stairwell? I don't know exactly what staff used. Tim, do you? So I think, Mr. Douglas, what we can look at is maybe some other spaces around the site, but it's pretty full, to be honest. So the only way to do it would be to, you know, reduce parking and/or shrink the building. That'd be the only way to get more open space.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ellison. To get things going here, this is not a perfect building, but we very seldom see perfect buildings. It's still the purpose of having a PUD, which gives us the ability to accept something that we may not want in order to get something better that we do want. So I think this building, although maybe, you know, the setbacks are small and the density may be too high or whatever it is, I think the whole project itself is delivering a tremendous benefit to our community. Its location, close to downtown on Troy Street, which is not necessarily a low traffic density. But I think it's overall, I think this building delivers more positive aspects to the community than negative aspects. So I'm going to move that we approve the PUD submitted.
Is there, that's a motion, so is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas.
I have a question.
Question from Mr. Gantina.
Preliminary or final?
What?
Is your motion a preliminary approval or?
Yeah, whatever we've got in front of us, preliminary approval, is that right?
There's two ways to do it. Say, we have approved, recommend approval of PUD and it's a preliminary plan and we're going to tell you to come back in six months. Or it's a recommendation to approve the PUD and we like this plan, run with it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have to excuse me, it's been seven years since I've been up here, so. Yes, you're right, okay. I'm for the preliminary PUD and I can add the site plan as an added on this, is that what you're saying?
We would, we could give the petitioner recommendations, I believe, about what we might be looking for and they would come back and, within six months.
Whatever we need to move that off this table tonight is what I want to move. So you tell me what the motion needs to say, Tim.
Right, and perhaps I should walk through the staff contingencies before you involve those.
I won't draw my motion until we've settled.
Because I think the petitioner may object to one or two of them. But you're correct, when you do make a motion, you have the right to do a preliminary approval, which would then give them the opportunity to resubmit a plan that's based on the contingencies that you adopt within the next six months. It could be in three months, it could be five months, but within the next six months, they'd have to bring it back to you. But so that's, that's item one under the contingencies, is do you want to do it as a preliminary or a final? If you did it as a final, it would go straight to the city commission with a recommendation, including any of the contingencies that you include in your recommendation. All of those listed deviations would be part of that, that there would be no more than 27 dwelling units. The height of the building would be permitted to be 44 feet at the roof line. The parapet does go up above that, that's where you'll see a reference to 48. But the roof line is what the zoning ordinance bases it upon. The next item would be, your approval would be the building placement based on the setbacks as depicted and referenced. You would be accepting the, that there would be no 10-foot triangle setback corner clearance off of South Troy and East Fifth is depicted on the yellow portions on the site plan. There would be no fewer than 27 parking spaces, including the barrier-free on the plan. And you would be accepting the landscape plan as presented. Those are all listed under item two in terms of the plan. The one the petitioner may object to, from my standpoint, is the staff recommendation was that the access driveway to Fifth Street actually be closed and reconfigured so that there would be no ingress, egress out of the site onto Fifth Street. The others are standard contingencies in regards to paving occurring in the right-of-way, being compliance with the city engineer standards, compliance with the stormwater ordinance, that all exterior lighting would be in compliance with the provisions in the code for lighting. Any signage that may be proposed in the future would be compliant with the sign ordinance or they would have the opportunity to come back to the planning commission for a signed variance. And then the posting of any performance bonds that are required by the building official. So those are our basic standard contingencies. But those are the items listed in the report. Again, the only one that may, the petitioner may object to is the closing of the East Fifth Street. At least that's my understanding.
Mr. Gantina.
So I do have a couple more questions before we move on the motion, not related to any energy stuff. The five workforce housing units, is the plan currently for those to, since you have one-bedroom and studio units, would those all be studios or is it a mix of one-bedroom and studios for those five units?
Likely a mix, sir.
Oh, so also there was, and you may not know the answer to this question yet, but there was a reference to the design of the building resulting in tenants paying less utilities. Without having to get into too much of the minutia, assuming that each of the units are individually metered, but you've got a large array on the roof of the building, I guess, have you figured out yet how you're going to essentially utilize this one main array that's providing energy for the building, but all the individual units themselves are individually metered? Have the conversations happened with DTE or anything to be able to, I guess, sort all that out so that the tenants are in fact able to receive the benefit of that system that's on the roof?
We have had conversations with DTE and our plan is to separately meter the units so that we can engage occupants to reduce their usage and help them improve their habits. But ultimately, part of our rental agreement with the tenants will be us paying the utilities. So that way, we get to recognize the benefits of the solar panels.
Understood, thank you.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, Mr. Twomey, I did notice the question of closing the East Fifth Street entrance. And I guess if I may, I'd like to ask the petitioner, what might be the implications of closing that exit in terms of trash pickups and so forth? I'm assuming that's your main point for it?
Actually, the trash pickup would occur off of Troy because that's open. The, if we were to close off Fifth Street, what would happen is we'd probably lose two parking spaces because cars would have to back up for them to then pull out.
spaces because cars would have to back up for them to then pull out, which would then lower our parking ratio or would have to reduce unit counts, would be the implication. Our thought is that it would, it could be a left turn only, even if we built in a pork shop to force people to turn left. So, we're hoping that from flow and also maximizing parking that we can keep that.
Thank you.
Oh, don't leave. So, I just.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to say that open door on Troy Street, I do have concerns about. The other doors that you're talking about, the other openings, including at Elevate and the other ones you showed, all have a door on them. And other than Elevate, they're in the downtown. If this is going to be open and you're going to be right on the lot line, that doesn't seem very safe to me. And is, and do you consider putting a roll-up door or something that would stop somebody from just whipping out of there?
We have not considered that, but I think that would be doable.
Absolutely. I see what you're saying, because you're forced to stop. Door goes off. Mike, you showed us the other pictures that show the doors.
They show the doors, yeah, absolutely. We were pointing at the lights, but we could put the door on those.
You gave me the right lights. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just a quick question about the permeability of the pavement and stormwater runoff. Can you walk through that for a quick second?
Ray, I wasn't a part of any of those conversations. Have we discussed any kind of permeable pavement or anything like that?
I mean, this area is just ripe with sand underneath, well-drained, you know, it's really an opportunity, especially given the, at least the outdoor parking there, it's not much. A permeable pavement solution there might work really, really, really well, especially for pooling of water, go right into the ground, save us on the burden on our system as well.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I don't think we've had many conversations with the civil engineers, but that's something we could absolutely look into. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. That would be, if this, if there's a motion passed here or in it.
That's part of it.
Let's say it makes it to the City Commission table to entertain my notion moving forward. I would highly recommend thinking about permeable pavement.
Yes, sir. That's something my partner and I have talked about a couple times. We want to do that. We need some clarification on feasibility of snow removal with permeability pavers, but it's something that we intend on doing if all signs point to go with that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
If I could just address two items. One, the egress onto Fifth Street. Let's keep in mind that the next four properties to the east are all zoned multifamily. I believe three of them are used as multifamily ranging from two rather large units to eight units. So, there's already exists that access for multifamily onto Fifth Street. The point here is we would have a left-only, even though the drawing shows it as what I would call a neutral driveway, you can have those channeled so that not only is there a sign that says left turn only, but it also channels it to a left turn only. And obviously, you know, people wanting to get to the point they want to go to the quickest, getting onto Troy Street is the quickest way to go. There may be other, there may be, if somebody is trying to get off on the Fifth Street, we've mentioned obviously both the refuse and snow removal and delivery trucks, but there may well be other blockages or whatever at different times and we just have an access point. I know also from a fire safety viewpoint, there's always emergency vehicles, there's always need for a second point of access. The second thing, just for clarification on the motion, what we're asking for is recommendations for the PUD and if you so choose, preliminary site plan. That means that if the recommendation went to the City Commission and they approved it, the rezoning portion of it would be completed. What we would be required to do is come back to you for a preliminary site, for a final site plan with the detail that you require shown on the drawings for the various environmental sustainability and other factors. So, that and our client, they clearly have no problem with coming back to you. What we'd like to avoid is having to go through the whole process twice and having to go to you and the City Commission and then come back and go to you and the City Commission. There are two members of the City Commission on this body, so I think whatever discussions happen, the City Commission will be well represented on the final site plan. So, what we would respectfully request is to get the PUD portion of it completed, hopefully, by just going back to the City Commission once. As you know, in order, you know, you have to get a loan, there's a lot of other moving parts with the project and it would be more beneficial and very helpful if we could say the rezoning portion is over, going to lenders. We have to get the plan approved. Granted, there are a lot of hoops to go through and things in detail to give you, but that would be what we would request. Thank you.
I'm going to ask a quick question of my experts here to my right and my left. So, if, since this is a single issue, PUD and site plan, they come back and the site plan isn't acceptable to us or to the City Commission, do they have a PUD rezoning or don't they?
Well, I'll jump in initially and answer the question is, this is not going to go from a preliminary PUD up to the City Commission without an approved site plan going along with it. Stepwise, generally what occurs is you can have a preliminary site plan and PUD here. Then you grant them permission to come back in six months with a final site plan that's associated with the PUD. That package gets sent to the City Commission for its consideration. At first reading, because this is an ordinance change, the City Commission will decide whether they concur with your recommendation or they want it modified or they reject it and turn it down. Those are all options for the City Commission. If the City Commission approves it with your conditions, there will be a second reading of that request at the City Commission, as with any ordinance change, which would change the map designation. In that interim, there will also be drafted a development agreement, which will lay out the written narrative in terms of that approval that the petitioner would be required to sign. In that document, most times is a discussion of what occurs and how it occurs in terms of an action plan. And in this particular case, what potentially the remedies might be if they don't meet the net zero provisions that you're talking about. So, I think the action that you're, in front of you this evening is to decide whether you have enough detail to support a final and send it to the City Commission, or whether you would, you support the PUD with a preliminary site plan and ask them to bring back details to you on the site plan and/or the net zero items, because that's entirely in your prerogative.
Okay. So, if I, just to be clear on the record, this isn't going to the City Commission until this body recommends the final plan?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Ellison.
Yes, I still want to get some clarification on the exit entryway on Fifth Street. And those are marked in here, it's no entry, left turn only. Why are we having it no entry? Why can't we have it two-way if we were to have that in there? Is there a reason? Or is that just something that you guys put in there just to try to sell it?
That's correct.
Yeah, the intent was to limit traffic as much as possible.
Yeah. I'll tell you where my concern is on this, is we have 27 units and a maximum, we're going to have 27 cars. And if those cars go to work in the morning and work in the afternoon and then maybe out again after work, if there's a full 27 and everybody goes out, that's less than 120 cars a day. I mean, in that area of town on Troy Street and this, in downtown, on the edge of downtown, 120 cars a day at anywhere from 8:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night, it breaks it up. It's insignificant in the big picture for 120 cars. If we had 500 cars in here, that'd be a different story. I personally believe that if we left that driveway open for access both ways, it's going to help alleviate any congestion problems we have on the Troy Street entry, because you're going to have cars coming in, heading north wanting to come in or heading south wanting to come in, left turns, you're going to full that traffic up and just throw the factor, there's a fire station right there, too. I think if we had the Fifth Street exit entry open for traffic both ways, I think it would help considerably with any potential traffic congestion.
Sure. Mr. Grantina.
Sorry, I had another quick question about EV chargers. I thought I read somewhere that chargers were being proposed and if they were indicated on the plan and I missed it, I didn't see them on the plan. So, is that part of what's being proposed as well, is having EV chargers in the parking lot?
Yes. How many?
15.
15.
15.
15 chargers?
Covered spaces, all the covered spaces have EV, correct?
EV accessible.
EV accessible.
Yeah. 15 charger, actual charger.
15 chargers, okay. It's a very large number.
Comments? I may have lost my way, it's my job to keep track of this, but I lost it. Do we have a motion on the table or do you withdraw?
No, we'll do the motion because we want to discuss more.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
I'm ready. If I could, just so, my clients, we all understand the procedure correctly of what's being the motion and then how we move forward. I think Mr. Twemby has given an excellent synopsis of how it goes. But just so there's no confusion, so if the motion that Mr. Ellison has proposed with the PUD and preliminary site plan passes, then we would go, the next step would be to go to the City Commission for their input on the PUD and the plan. Well, okay, well, I know you're shaking your head, but here's the thing I'm trying to get at from our perspective. This is going to come back anyways. You said we would have six months to submit the final site plan. So, my, what I'm concerned about is how do I get everybody's comments into one document? Because the whole purpose of the PUD is to have, as you pointed out, a site plan attached to the approval. So, if we have to do, come back here next month, let's say, with another site plan, then this gets approved, considered final by this body, then we have to go back up to the City Commission and they want to make changes. We're kind of in a circle going through this process. I think what the ordinance says and the way to proceed is, we have this on a preliminary basis, up to the City Commission, they say, looks good, send it back, and then we go back to them for the final final. I think that's what the ordinance dictates. So, I'm just trying to get to how many meetings and how many, what process we have to go through so they understand.
The recommendation coming from this planning body to the City Commission will be based on a final PUD. You won't have, if the planning commission says, we're granting you preliminary PUD approval, you have no site plan that goes along with that to even send to the City Commission, because they haven't seen it to give you a recommendation on it. They're still having questions on it. They want to see it back with revisions based on the commentary within the next six months so that they can send a package with a recommendation to the City Commission. If I just sent the PUD rezoning up to them, the City Commission's not going to have a plan.
No.
Because they haven't got comment on it. And that's our normal process and procedure that we've done for everyone. I don't see that changing here.
Well, I'm not sure that's exactly, but we do have a site plan. We have a preliminary site plan with changes that are going to be recommended and that's what goes to the City Commission, because otherwise, I'm going through two full-blown reviews and.
You're going to go through two full reviews, one here and one at the City Commission. And if the City Commission disagrees with what this body says here, that's the end of it.
And that's our prerogative, absolutely. But I guess what I was trying to get to is for efficiency, which I think is what the PUD ordinance, in my reading of it, implies, is that we would have this preliminary site plan and PUD, we go up to the City Commission, we then have them say yes, but, and then we have to come back here with the final site plan, and then the final site plan has to go back to the City Commission, is what you said. Is that the case or not?
No.
Okay. So, you're saying even tonight, if there's some type of approval, we have to come back to this body with a final site plan? Okay. I just want to make sure we fully understand and appreciate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think, I think, I think if it's a preliminary approval, I think there has to be a minimum of three. One, back here, two, up to the City Commission, three, minimum of three. That's what I think.
Okay. So, understanding the procedure then, I'm going to offer a motion to approve the preliminary PUD. I do want, in the preliminary site plan, but I do want to eliminate the contingency of the closing off the door on the Fifth Street side, rather keep that door open. So, that was contingency number C.
Is there a second on the motion to approve a PUD and preliminary site plan with the elimination of contingency C?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ellison, you said door, but what you meant was driveway.
The driveway, I'm sorry.
Because we also talked about adding a door there on the garage. So, you're talking about the driveway.
I'm talking about the driveway something. I want to allow the driveway to be used for traffic both ways in and out.
I have a question about your motion, too.
Okay.
Is it a preliminary site plan with a recommendation on the PUD? Or is it a preliminary PUD?
Again, we've discussed this so many times. Tim, what do we need to do? I thought we had to approve a preliminary PUD.
You can approve the PUD with a preliminary site plan.
Then that's what I want to do.
With the condition.
Yeah, with the condition, yes. Okay, that's what I thought I was doing.
I understand. My mother's a grandmother queen. I just want to make sure.
That's the motion. The only way we always did it, the only change I want to make is to allow that Fifth Street driveway to be open for traffic both ways.
Right. So, you're eliminating C.
Yeah, C, yeah.
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there discussion? Mr. Grantina.
So, now would be the time to offer up additional contingencies if we wanted them in the motion, correct?
I think so.
Okay. So, I would actually like to offer it for discussion, the contingency that the five workforce housing units are required to be a mix of unit types within the building.
Okay. These are, these are recommendations that would, to the, I'm not sure that.
It's an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I said, I said yes, but maybe, maybe not, because there's two things. You can amend, ask to amend the motion or we can pass the motion and in our discussion, tell the petitioners what they got to come back with.
So, it was really sort of two things in my mind, because I wasn't sure if now was when we added contingencies in terms of the overall verbal process. But, yes, so I would like to offer up an amendment to the motion that a contingency be added for the five workforce housing units to be required to be a mix of housing types or unit types within the building.
Okay. But it's not your motion, so how does that work?
I'm offering this up for discussion to amend it.
Yeah, he's operating up as an amendment. You need a second on the amendment and then it becomes a point of discussion. And if we approve the amendment, then it becomes part of the motion for the first motion.
Okay. All right. Is there a second on the offered amendment?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Forhan. Okay, good. All right. So, and in terms of sequence here, we would have to vote on the amendment first, right?
Yeah, we're talking about the amendment.
Discussion and then vote please on the amendment only.
Okay. Sir, questions, comments, discussions on the amendment?
I'll just add that verbally, the petitioner thought that that was the case anyway, so it doesn't seem like it's a burden, so I have no problem memorializing that.
All right. Discussion on the amendment?
And I'll just, I'll speak to what I offered up. That's really why I wanted to put that contingency in, because I've seen other projects where affordable units were offered, there were less desirable units and more desirable units within the overall development and all of the affordable units became also less desirable units. So, in an effort to sort of not have that happen here, because you may have folks that do qualify for workforce housing, that would benefit from one bedroom being there. And if that wasn't one of the ones that are available, I just want to memorialize that.
All right.
Vote on the amendment.
I think we need to vote on the amendment. All right? And I will be supportive of the amendment. So, any other comments on this? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The amendment passes, so now we have a motion on the table to approve the PUD with the preliminary site plan with the elimination of contingency C and the additional contingency that the workforce housing will be a mix of units.
I think that amendment wasn't here when we first were offering comments, so I think it would be a comment on the amendment on that east side doorway. That's by Sign York, right next to it, no lot line.
I'm sorry, it's, we're on the side of the table and I think there's a misunderstanding there. The contingency doesn't have to do with the, with the door.
It'll come back again.
There is something, yes, there is a motion that we're still talking about with the door.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, now we have the motion. Do we have other comments or questions? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, this is dealing with the preliminary site plan, so if this passes and comes back, just a few comments on my end. I like the idea of like some sort of motion censored gate, perhaps, just as an idea. You guys will think about it best, just to keep that traffic there. You know, lots of stuff going on on Troy, any of those exits that might be somewhat impaired for the. You know, lots of stuff going on on Troy. Any of those exits that might be somewhat impaired for the driver exiting. Those are pretty standard today, and you could even make them license plate activated and all these cool things for security if you want. And then I really want to understand what your permeable pavement plan, whether it's pavers or actually pavement itself that the water goes through, where, you know, that might take care of your issue with the, if you have concerns about snow removal, things of that nature. So those are important, I think, community objectives as well, and I don't think they shouldn't be a tremendous cost burden, given the size of the parking lot. I hope not. They're pretty, getting to be pretty comparable now. And it would be a really nice aesthetic, so I think, you know, you could charge $3 more a month per rent and pay for it.
All right, other, Mr. Gantina?
Again, just if this does get passed and it comes back to us, one thing I would like to see is just a calculation on that percent offset that the PV system is being designed for, whether it does end up being at zero or not. I'd just like an understanding of what that percent offset is going to be.
All right. I've got a couple of comments. I may. Just looking at this from 30,000 feet, the master plan for this area, the current master plan says single-family homes. This is on Troy Street. Things have changed since the master plan. There's a lot of pressure for multifamily housing. The market is telling us something because there's somebody before us wanting to put a big multifamily development on this block, on Troy Street. And if we are going into the master plan process, which we are, and in fact, six months from now, we'll probably be deep into the process, I would be surprised if the houses, the rest of the houses on this block of Troy Street are, I think, I think there's going to be pressure to change the master plan to some more flexible zoning than single-family. So I think that's where the market wants to push us. But right now, they're single-family.
Zone multi-family.
I'm sorry, the master plan, I'm sorry, is, is future land use is single. I think, I think that's going to change, what my point is. So that, that's the direction that, that I think this block is going to go in, is multifamily. And I think, I think we'll see that during the master plan project. However, I have some problems. I like the building. If this building was situated a little differently, I would really, really like it. I have some problems with the way it is sited. Let me just say, I know that those renderings, tons of renderings, those are not cheap to make. Somebody spent some time to show us these renderings, and I do appreciate it. It's very, very helpful, because one of the things it did for me was it explained to me just how incongruous this building is on this block at the moment. Now, it might not be in the future, we don't know that yet, but right now it's very incongruous. It's in the manner of, you know, it's an apartment building, it's in the manner of a commercial building, it's on the lot line. It's not like anything else on this block. The other, as somebody said, I don't remember, somebody said that the other multifamily on this block are set back, they're, they're almost hidden. And then south of here is the townhouses. Across the street is across the street. This block right now, this is very incongruous. And so I have that issue. I don't, I don't like the door right on the sidewalk. We talked about putting a door there. It'd be better if the building was set back, and then that would be safer. And I'd like to see the, the sight lines, the 10-foot sight lines meant. So those are my concerns with it. I think that the type of project, a larger multifamily on this site is where we're going. It's where the market is pushing us, so I'm not opposed to that. I would like to see a different site plan. I'd like to see it pulled back from the sidewalks and as part of it. It's, it's a very tall building, so I, I have all those concerns about it. However, I think this is, this is the project type where this block is going. Those are my comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, the objectives of this community for a long time has been to look for a development of housing that is attainable and affordable. For most of us, I know right now, I would not be able to afford the house that I live in, and I live, you know, just a handful of blocks away from where this will be. We've been looking to achieve and kicked off this past year, but really doing a lot of effort this year with our SCAP and looking to, not just as a city and the buildings that we have, which is less than 1% of the footprint in Royal Oak, but look to figure out how we can encourage, motivate, whether individual homeowners, multi-site, or multifamily, or multi-commercial locations to lower their footprint of carbon, whether that be via net-zero activities, building buildings more efficient, LEED certification, whatever it may be. And really help with some density to appease demand and keep things somewhat affordable. I look at my three kids, they got to have a place to live. I don't know that if they're all going to be corporate executives or, you know, wealthy independent entrepreneurs, but if they want to be a letter carrier, a teacher, a police officer, they should have a place to live in Royal Oak. And so the challenge we have as this board and as a city commission is how do you balance that with what we have today versus how we set up this community to be enjoyed by future generations of people like us? Not just the elite, not just the, the folks that can afford a $600,000 home. I think this plan, I mean, there's some things we have to talk about at the site plan, but I think this does help achieve some of our goals. One of the ways you get there is through density. So it's 27, not 20. And that's because, you know, there is an initial investment, there is risk. But to get it to be net zero, to get it to be attainable for generations today and future generations, and that's not unique to this project. That is, you know, the future if we're going to solve this issue. So I really appreciate the petitioner's effort here, because often we do get folks that talk a game. But regardless of the dimensions and all of this other stuff, you really put a commitment here to make this to be attainable with the workforce housing, as well as the environmental sustainability features you put in it are certainly meeting, you know, two key objectives of the, of the community, independent of the site plan. So, thank you.
Mr. Gantina?
So I just want to echo some of the mayor's comments. I commend you for bringing a project like this forward and voluntarily offering up the amenities that you have included in here. Regardless of the performance level that it achieves at the end of the day, it's still more than likely going to be far and way better than a traditionally built building that would be the same. I did have some additional commentary for you regarding the tenant education that you had proposed, because I think that's a very unique component of what you're, what you're proposing here. You know, obviously you're proposing a high-performance building, but the occupants of that building are the ones that are really going to dictate how that building performs. I don't know if either one of you are familiar with the bullet center in Seattle, but that is a project you may want to look into in the sense that while it being a commercial building, built into the leases, all the tenants agree to an energy budget. And what that building was able to create was essentially a tradable commodity. Tenants that were willing, that were able to live within their budget or below their budget essentially had a tradable commodity, because there were other tenants that could not live within their budget. So it's a unique way to look at how to educate your tenants and incentivize them in different ways. Because ultimately, their use and occupancy of that building is what will dictate how it's going to perform at the end of the day. You're setting them up well and building the building the way that you're building it. I agree with many of the comments around density and really, you know, having to sort of maybe take some things that we don't want in order to get many more things that we do want. So I'll be supporting the project, and I believe that you'll take all of our comments to heart and bring back, you know, something even better for the final.
Other comments? All right. Is that, is that a hand or just a shrug there?
That was just a I, nothing.
All right. So the motion on the table is to approve the PUD with the preliminary site plan with the elimination of contingency C and the addition that the workforce housing will be a mix of units. That's the motion. And so I think we're ready to vote. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, none opposed. Motion passes. Congratulations. Are we done, or do we want to have further discussion about other things we'd like to see in the, in the plan when they come back? Or is there a process for them to communicate with the department?
You're done.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Next project, this is a conditional rezoning, one family resident, in the, one family residential overlay district to a multifamily residential and site plan SP 23-01-02. Mr. Thwing, please introduce us to this project.
As you indicated, the zoning districts on the site in the request, the property is located on the north side of West Fourth Street, between Maple Avenue and Pleasant Street. In December of 2013, the planning commission did approve a special land use permit and site plan to renovate the space and expand from the convolent center to an senior assisted living with 41, 41-person units in it. That plan never proceeded, so it, it has lapsed. At the present time, the petitioner is proposing to change the zoning from one-family residential to multifamily residential as a conditional rezoning. Again, I think I touched on this briefly earlier. The difference between this and the PUD and/or the conventional rezoning is that under the statute, the petitioner has, has to provide you with their benefits that they want to provide, and you're a little more limited in what you can impose in terms of additional criteria. The petitioner is proposing to renovate the existing building into 25 multifamily dwelling units, 15 of which would be one-bedroom and 10 would be studio units. Existing off-street parking in the basement would be reused, as well as the surface parking along the public alley would be reconfigured. There are no additions to the building being proposed. Terms of the parking along the alley, staff is recommending, you'll see in the staff memo, if you approved it, that all of the parking spots be configured in the same fashion. The public alley is basically 15 feet wide. The zoning ordinance requires spaces to be 9 by 20. And to prevent kind of, if you wanted two-way movement, you'd have them all be 90 degrees. If you wanted one-way movement, they might have some angle to them. But to have them mixed as proposed can be confusing in what the flow of traffic might be along the public alley. We do believe that all of the spaces could be converted to 90-degree spaces and comply with some, most of the zoning ordinance requirements. You'll see in the report that that also would add an additional three spots along the western portion of the site, rather than what's simply shown at this point. You'll see in the report that the handicap spots are allowed to be 18 feet in depth by state statute. They'd end up being 18 six. So we do believe that those would be compliant with the barrier fee requirements. Some of the deviations that I'll walk through on this project as well. And again, there are no building additions being proposed. The first one listed in the report is in regards to the maximum projection that a porch or steps can come out front of the building. And you'll notice that the ordinance allows it to be seven feet. In this case, the south steps come out some 11 feet. The west are out some 25 feet with handicap ramp and a porch. Again, that's an existing situation. The maximum height, the building width ratio requirement at 1 to 3, you'll see in it, the building actually has a 1 to 7 requirement in terms of existing. The lot size, in terms of density, only seven dwelling units would be allowed under the, based on the current existing lot size. They are again proposing 25. Terms of the setbacks, again, as a, proposed as a multifamily, would require a 25-foot setback, unless the planning commission determines something else. You will notice that the west side yard setback is 15 feet 7 inches. The north side yard setback is 23 feet 4 inches from the property line, and again, the alley also goes along that side. There is, in terms of the screening between land uses, the ordinance talks about a six-foot landscape, green belt or masonry wall. Nothing is proposed on the north side of the alley. So you'll indicate, we've indicated that there's nothing being proposed between that uses. The setback for off-street parking again is, should, should be 25 feet under the ordinance. You'll notice on the plan that the parking goes in front of the building, so it's in the 25-foot setback area. The number of parking spaces under the ordinance for 25 units, it would require two per unit or 50. Again, the petitioner is proposing 25 or one per unit. The maximum maneuvering aisle generally for two-way movement is 20 feet. Again, the alley is simply 15. Excuse me. The minimum general depth of a parking space is 20 feet. As I indicated, all of those proposed would meet at least 18 feet 6 inches. And the last one is in regards to a sign and the sign placement in the southwest corner of the site, which doesn't comply with the sign ordinance setback, which would require that monument sign to be back 10 feet, and it's at five. The, one other item that you'll have to consider is the number of trees that were removed, are planned to be removed, the, and then replaced. The petitioner is short some, I want to say 50 inches. So under the ordinance, they would either have to pay into the tree replacement fund or plant additional trees on the site. I think that's all the provisions that we would identify there. I can either run through these, if you wanted to approve this, I can run through staff's recommendations, or I can wait to see whether you would want to recommend approval of the rezoning.
Shall we hear from the petitioner's first?
Sure.
Let me do that. Just a quick question. You just talked about the trees. I thought the staff部 said that, that they met the tree ordinance. They would not have to. Did I read that wrong? They would not have to pay into the fund or anything? No, or the number of. I'm looking on page seven.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Okay. All right, very good. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, introduce yourself. Tell us why you're entitled to the relief that you seek.
Good evening. My name is Gasali Abdnou from JAB Associates Architect. I'm representing the owners with me, they're here, both of them. And thank you for having us here tonight. And we thanks the same process, the planning department that been working with us through that process to come up and be in front, in front of you here tonight to present that project. We're starting this project, it's, it's not an easy project. It's building, it's built in 1920. It's been for a long time in that location. It had two different additions to it in 1964 and in 1974. So this building, we're here actually tonight with the owners. We want to hear from you. We want to do something with this building. The original owner. The original owner with his partners bought that building in 2013, so they owned that building for ten years now. They did come up in front of the planning commission, and they do, they did get approval for senior living. Like we said, the final one was forty-one or forty-four units. The approval before was almost ninety-eight units, unit. And the doctor who owned it originally, he thought that he's going to do senior living and he runs it in the process. And once after the approval and after some kind of situation during nineteen, 2013 and the economy, it delayed a little bit the project for that. But during, during that so many years, we tried to kind of, the owners tried to work with us to see what's the best thing for this building. Even to come up with ninety-eight units, or forty units, or fifty units senior living, or try to go for something very simple, make studios and one-bedroom apartment, twenty-five unit, and less for the headache, for the process, for the parking, and at the same time, just to make it simpler for running the building and create apartments. The apartments, we come up with the design with the owners, and we come up with twenty-five units, and we try to meet the requirements, try at least to have one parking per unit. These apartments and these studios, they're actually the size of one room going to a hotel. Most of the hotels, they're three hundred fifty square feet. We are proposing here averaging, in this building, they're mainly between three fifty to four hundred square feet a unit. So these units are mainly like one-man person, person who lives down, they have one bed, there's no place to have two beds in these units. So after going through the process with the owners and their partners, that they're actually builders, and they were helping us trying to make this building more efficient. So we decided to come here in front of you today. We showed twenty-five units. We're making the building, we actually, we start guarding the project. We did get approval for guarding and cleaning the inside of the building. We're fixing the environment in the building. There's no lat in the building. We're cleaning everything. We're taking from the dumpster and we're making it look good. At the same time, we're trying to make that building more good for the, the building is not going anywhere. Since nineteen twenty, structurally, we got a structural engineer, they checked the building is very, very solid building. So, and as we do, as we deal with old buildings, and that's what we call for historical buildings, we're not going to demolish that building. This building is in good shape. It's a two-story, it works good, and we're trying to make it hundred times better by making it more environmentally for the neighborhood. And we're here tonight to talk to you and to talk to the same thing for the neighbors. We didn't have a chance to talk to them, but we're willing to be outside and when they leave and to talk to make things, this project more valuable and good for the community. We are in Royal Oak. My kids live in Royal Oak. They come to school, and so this is something that we like to be and make our neighborhood safe and better. And it's better than have a three-story building that exists over basement. We have parking in the basement and we have mechanical areas, and we have the first floor and second floor. So we're looking to kind of work with you guys, help us, give us advice. This is, we're going now for conditional rezoning, but we're willing to listen what you tell us. The brick of the building, we're kind of working on either keeping it or changing it or painting it. We are refacing the whole building with a new design. We're changing all our windows. We're guarding all the mechanical system in this building. We're guarding all the electrical, and we're starting from scratch. Building structurally is very safe, and we like to keep it, and we like to be part of Royal Oak. It's been here for nineteen twenty. So I'm going to go through the process, and I'm going to tell you what we think we need to do in this building, but we like your advice. I mean, I understand where you are, you sit in your chair. I've been planning commissioner in city of West Bloomfield for twelve years, so I sat on these chairs for twelve years. I know exactly what you want from us to do. And also, we need to know the importance of apartments lately, because what the mayor was saying, a lot of, we need affordable housing. Actually, we just come up with a new study in the city of West Bloomfield, and that was very hard in West Bloomfield to happen, to come up with apartment. And now we just come up with any fill the project, trying to create apartments even in areas that nobody else thought that is ever going to happen. Because we've been having cries from people that they can't afford. My kids, your kids, it's one person, it's a studio, you're not going to have two people in these. That's why one car is more than enough, especially in Royal Oak. Royal Oak is a walkable city. If somebody visit for like five minutes, there's also parking on the street, and that's something we can help. But actually, for the buildings itself, every unit has one parking. So we're not asking for anybody of people living in this unit to actually park on the street, unless somebody visiting, unless somebody walking. We're working with the planning department to create bicycle places, walkable spaces, and also we're willing to work with even more, creating more landscaping to this building. We did meet the requirement, but if the, if the planning department ask for more, we want to make the building look good. We're going to work with the sign. If we need to move it, we will. It's an existing sign, that's why we thought it's good to keep the historical look at it. If we have to move it five feet, we're willing to do that. Actually, we, actually what we're trying to do is we want to do something with this building. The guy owns it for ten years, he's paying taxes. The building is ISO right now. The parking is in bad shape. We're trying to make it all clean, add everything you need that you recommend for us to do. We're changing the roof, we're creating a new elevation for the building. So actually, if you go to the elevation, Tim, I just, we're trying to create a nicer look for the elevation from the proposed. We have a colored one. So we're keeping, we're cleaning all the brick, we're fixing all the brick. This is the back area. If you go to the front, Tim, I appreciate it. There's another one?
No, it's at the bottom.
It's at the bottom, yeah. So like from the street side, we're breaking it a little bit, we're adding some panels, we're making it a little bit more attractive. At the same time, creating all the landscaping in front of it, changing all the windows. And we want to make it part of something that the owner is proud of it, and you guys are proud of it, and our neighbors. And we like to talk to our neighbors. I mean, having only twenty-five cars is better than having ninety-eight beds in this building and having fifty parents or kids coming to visit their parents on Saturday and Sunday. That means there's no place to park. This, we thought this is the cleanest way to do this project. It's an expensive project, and it's an expensive recommendation, and it's expensive demolition, and it's expensive renovation. So at least we needed the twenty-five apartments just to break even and to keep the project going. So we're here to get any advice from you. Most of the units are three hundred fifty, most of the, to four hundred square feet. There's only two units, maybe five hundred square feet, the one on the, on the side, but most of them are very livable for one person, one bed. That's why we thought that one car per unit is more than enough. And I just want to go back to the environmental issues. I was just talking to the owners, they're here. We're willing to work with you even in the kind of, to make it lead approved, like, not certified, but we can prep all the bathrooms, the mechanical, the glass, the lighting, everything to have it to be close to, up to elite consideration. And if you think that having panels on the roof, we never thought about it, but if this what happened in the project in front of us, if you think this is a possibility, we're willing to work on it. The building is structurally safe. It's a block and cement building, so we can put the roof. If you kind of, you like to do that, we would love to work with you and make it happen. So we're here to get this conditional rezoning from you. We want to do something in this building. We want to make it look for the city, for the neighbors, and make sure our owners that can afford it. They've been paying taxes for a long time, for almost ten years right now. And we're here begging you to kind of help us doing this project, begging you to make it happen, and at the same time, we're willing to work with the neighbors, and I'm sure a lot of them has ideas, and to talk to us about it. So we can maybe work with them and make this project a, something good for the, for the city of Royal Oak. For the, for the stuff that Tim was talking about, for the parking, we're willing to work with them, make it ninety degrees if it's work. If we want to, if you recommend to do it one way, we're comfortable doing it either way as long as the code and the requirements meet, and you're happy, and the building department is happy. And for the fire, for the fire protection, this building has a riser, I mean, fire riser. So we are, it's going to be fire designed for it. We're meeting all the requirements, the safety, and I'm just going to here to answer any questions you have for me. And this is really what we're looking for. We're looking for ten studios and the fifteen one-bedroom apartment. But actually, the fifteen one-bedroom apartment, if you go to real story, they are studios because they're only three, four hundred square feet. But we're just putting a door for the unit to make it more private. And if you think that we need to make them all studios, we're willing to do that and take the door and make, make it all open. So we're here in a kind of an open board, but at the same time, we're begging to do something in this building. It's been a suffering for the owners, and we want to make it look for the neighborhood. And I will answer any questions you have.
All right. Are there questions for the petitioner from the commissioners? Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you for this. Just a couple of questions and observations. And I suspect that Mr. Twing explained this to you, but by applying for a conditional rezoning, we can't make any suggestions.
You can?
We cannot. We cannot ask for any extractions or changes.
So I can help you, we can make these suggestions, but we like to get anything that you think that the city needs from us to do this. We're willing to work with you, but if not, we will be willing to put the suggestions ourselves.
Mr. Twing, this is a conditional rezoning. Will they subsequently have to submit a site plan? Or is the, are the plans that we see here?
Well, you do have the ability to modify the site plan like you would any site plan, like staff's recommending the angle spots be ninety-degree versus angle, so you get three more spaces and things like that. You can, you can deal with that. You can't really ask for things outside the ordinance, like asking for it to be a LEED certified building. He's not offering that.
I can be offering, like to have plumbing.
You can make modifications to it if, you know, if you felt there was some other site plan issue, you needed a few more trees, normal things, but you couldn't ask for something, something that's not being offered.
Okay, so the memo here is, is just a conditional rezoning. At what point do we approve a site plan?
With this. It's one action. Again, it's a recommendation to the city commission with those contingencies that you want to offer.
Okay.
This is a one-step process. There is no preliminary, there's no, now you can, if you felt there were additional things that you needed to see, you could postpone it or table it, give them an opportunity to make revisions and bring it back, but generally, it's a one-step process here, and that goes through the city commission with your recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Eric, do you want to follow up on that?
I want to follow up that. So the department has already given us a bunch of contingencies.
Right.
So we could add or subtract from these contingencies that address zoning issues. Okay? All right.
So yes, some questions. Go back for me. So the city of Royal Oak recently committed, completed a plan to help our residents either age in place or find alternate housing. Explain again why the idea of senior housing was rejected?
No, actually, it was not rejected. Actually, I was just talking to the owners. They're willing to do, we can turn it to senior housing. Actually, we don't have problem to have senior living in it. We kept it open for senior and for younger generation, but the owners, they don't have any problem with senior housing. Originally, we get approved for senior assisted living. Assisted living mean they have nurses, they have five, they have, it's more medical. We're trying to take that part out, but we are willing to do it senior housing or regular housing, so.
Well, so, but what you're, I'm not suggesting that this current proposed configuration be confined to seniors. I guess my question was, why not the, why not the assisted living?
Assisted living is more like a business, so you have to have there, you have to have employees working there, you have to have people coming every Sunday, every Saturday, visiting their families. We thought legally, legally and according to the, to the site we have, we can do, we can do assisted living. But we thought because of the site, and it's going to be more congested than just having a regular senior or regular apartment housing. I mean, the other one, you can go to forty-four, and we had ninety-eight bedroom. So that's a lot of people in this one. So can you imagine Saturday or Sunday, people visiting their parents? You're going to have a lot of people there. So we, the owners thought that let's make it more simpler, more work with the, with the community, and just come up with that. But if this one doesn't work, we're going to go back to the senior living. We thought it's better to check this one, to make it simpler project, and to make it good, walkable for like younger or older generation. I mean, senior, they can prove it. We can make it even all senior people living there, so we don't have problem with that. So, so the only reason why we changed it from assisted living, because we wanted less density, and the owner didn't want to have a business there. He just wanted like housing, people go to sleep, done, we don't have issues. Because once you start doing assisted living, and I do design a lot of assisted living, usually the buildings are bigger, you have easier for fire trucks, you have easier for ambulance coming in. So we thought that this is less, less headache for the neighbors, and that's why we didn't get approved for it, and we changed it. And if this one doesn't work, the owner has to do something. We might have to go back to the, what we get approved before.
Okay, thank you. Does the building have an elevator?
Yes.
Going up to the second floor?
That's right, yeah. It's actually going back to the basement to the second floor.
Right. Would you have assigned parking or would parking be open?
Actually, with twenty-five units, would be assigned parking, because every person should know his parking. We have twenty-five units.
Wrong answer.
What was that?
Wrong answer.
Okay, so, and I thought that's what you want me to do.
No.
So it doesn't have to be assigned. That's why I'm here. Ask me what you want, and I answer whatever you like.
It's okay. The handicap ramp on the west side, is that remaining or being removed?
The handicap ramp?
There's a handicap ramp on the west side?
It's remaining. It's going to be kind of...
Go back, go back, Tim, I just saw it.
Can I see it? Oh, yeah, we have to have it for that entrance. But we need to have second exit for the handicap, that's why we kept it. Because we do have the elevator on the other side, we have to have a handicap access.
So how, because I'm trying to read the plans and understand, so there is an entrance in the western portion of the building on the south side, there were steps there.
Yes.
And as you say, the ramp...
And there's one from the park and from the back.
Is there also an entrance just to the right of that one? I mean, right now, there's an awning, and there's a, an entrance?
On the side. On the front, you're talking?
On the, on the front.
On the front, really, there is an entrance, but if, if Tim think that we need to take these steps out, we can. They're existing steps, and if we need to take them, we can. Because that's the door we get into the, from the handicap part, that's the access for the handicap.
So let's say, let's say I'm handicapped and I'm living in the east end of the building.
It's open, there's a corridor open to all of it.
And the corridor goes all the way through to the west entrance of the building?
That's right. Yes, yes, it's all the way, to the elevator.
No, if I'm, at the west end of the, so you got, you got the, the house, right? The original house, and then the addition. But there's an aisle through the house portion that creates an exit, emergency exit. But there's an aisle through the house portion that creates an exit, emergency exit on the west side of the building?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, that wasn't clear on the drawings.
Yeah, it's chosen the floor plan, but yes, it's all connected.
Okay. And so you're proposing to keep the existing brick exterior?
We're actually, we're proposing either to keep the existing brick and fix it and take the, because we're changing the window location, so we have to work around it, or we're going to reface it, or reface it with material. So like some type of board, like some kind of siding or something, that's what we break in the building in the front.
Well, that is kind of relevant, because I like the brick.
So that's why we're keeping it under under.
Okay.
See, I like to work with you.
We're taking up a lot of clues here. Okay, that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for the petitioner? I got a quick one. The awning is coming down, yes, the one that goes out to 4th Street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Other questions, Mr. Gantier?
The total number of units, the 25 units, is that economically driven, or was that because there's 25 parking spots?
No, because the building is there, and we're dealing with an existing corridor, so we had to, it's kind of, it used to be way smaller rooms, we made them bigger for this project. It used to be 98 rooms in this building. So we changed them to 25. Give me beds, but still.
98 beds?
Beds, yeah. 98 beds. But the last approval was done in 2013, was like rooms and one bed in it. We had 44 in the last approval.
All right. Other questions for the petitioner?
I had one thing to add.
Commissioner Douglas?
I just hope you're right in that people across America are going to see their parents and grandparents on the weekends.
I hope so. We know we do. That's why we love our parents, and that's why we...
That's all.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner at the moment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask the petitioner to have a seat, and we'll open the public comment on, I see a hand up already here. We'll have public comment on this petition, and please come up when you're called, which you are being called. Introduce yourself, you have three minutes, and be aware of the dinger.
Great, thank you. So, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Mark Navin. I live 309 South Maple, so four houses up from the property. I've been there 15 years, and my wife and I have raised our three children there. We love the city. We like living in a growing, vibrant, energized city. We are grateful to you and other members of our city's leadership for promoting greater density and development in our city. We don't think this is a good proposal for our city. I had a whole set of prepared things to say, but I must say, I was flabbergasted by a number of the comments from the previous speaker, so I'm going to speak as temperately as I about those. First, the suggestion that the assisted living facility was more disruptive, or would be, was more disruptive, would be more, would have been, I don't know the right term tense, more disruptive than a future apartment building, I think is highly unlikely. I've lived there, assisted living was present. These people in the beds don't drive. The nurses, most of them, and other workers only there during the day. The nighttime crew is a skeleton crew, there's almost no disruption. And more importantly, all trash deliveries is centrally managed, and there's management on site, so as a neighbor, there's always someone to talk to. Heck, we've invited them to our block parties. They were good neighbors. The idea of 25 units with 25-plus people, 50, maybe 25 cars, that's a much more disruptive plan. Maybe that's appropriate for our neighborhood, I don't think so, but if they're open to assisted living, I would much prefer to go back to something like that. I was supportive of the 2013 plan. Okay, transition, I want to speak to the former speaker. I really appreciate it, openness to hearing from the neighbors. I wish that, I believe it's sincere, it's not consistent with my experience. That property's been allowed to rot for a decade with no interaction with the neighborhood. Beginning this summer, they began interior demolition. It's true, they eventually got a permit, they began unpermitted demolition. They only got a permit after they got a cease work order, after the neighbors had to call. They had day laborers out there with no protective gear in the property, demolishing it, coughing up clouds of dust. I believe there's no lead there now. They got all that lead dust, asbestos, and probably black mold out, given the water penetration. I'm sure the mold was all over the place. I don't think the current owners are good partners for the kind of development we want to see in the city, given both the decade of neglect and frankly, the past number of months of abuse of our city's trust when it comes to the demolition. So I ask you to deny the petitioner's request. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public, I see a gentleman back there in the black jacket. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Steve Schwartz, I live at 803 West 4th Street, so kitty corner to the property we're in, talking about. I just had a couple of points I want to make, and we've talked about the master plan before, and it says pretty clearly in there, right, like the multifamily and the different use structures were kind of grandfathered in. And if you wanted to keep them that way, then you can continue. And it says, if you're not going to do that, then it should be per the zoning, which is single-family. So that, to me, is pretty clear. When we look at, is there a financial hardship? I struggle, as someone who works in business and works on business cases all the time, to look at a property that was bought for just over a half million, and was recently on the market for just under 2 million, to see any financial hardship there in terms of the building being there. Excuse me. We tear down buildings all the time to build properties. Right now, it says three single-family homes, but they have no problem with a deviation that says, hey, can we put four in there? Because I know it's really close to four. And the other thing I'd just like to say is, I think you'll hear from fellow, many of the other residents here, you guys are up here, you represent us as well, and we appreciate everything that you guys do for us. I think you'll feel a resounding sentiment that this isn't the direction this neighborhood wants to go. There's a fine balance between having multifamily and single-family, and we have a good balance now. I'd like to keep that balance. As the gentleman before me mentioned, when we had the assisted living in there, it was not disruptive. I lived at my house at that time, and it was very, very quiet. I would support something like that as well. With all that said, I appreciate you guys' time, and I appreciate you representing us, and thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Are there other people, I see a gentleman over here in the hoodie.
Yep, sorry, we're refinishing my house right across the street.
That's okay, I meant nothing by it there.
My name is Frank Bowden. I live at 723 West 4th, which is directly across from the building. I will echo a couple of sentiments over here. I lived there for 40 years, lived there for when the assisted living was there, and the nursing home was there. It was great neighbors, always, there wasn't a whole lot of activity to the point, you know, there's, seniors don't drive, then the assisted living, the nursing staff, you've got parking there for some of the nursing staff, some of the street parking was used for nursing staff, and it wasn't disruptive. You know, shift change, you'd see them leave. I'm more worried about the idea of a 30, 150-foot, square foot apartment being basically for transients, right? And the people on our street, I've known some of these people for 30, 25, you know, 15, 25, 30 years, right? Some of them 40 years. I think that's more in keeping with what the neighborhood is, right? And having a, you know, putting in 25 to 50 new transients. And personally, I don't have a driveway. 723 is just weird because it faces onto Maple Court there. And I, you know, wouldn't have a place for my friends to park if the people started parking, you know, 25 units across the street. So I'm really concerned that it changes the whole character of the neighborhood. I mean, there are, you know, in the previous proposal from the Troy Street, you mentioned, what's the benefit to the neighborhood, you know, the city and the neighborhood, right? I don't see a benefit for this particular plan. We always talked, if you're doing senior living, I could move across the street. I'm 71 now, I'd probably be there in a couple of years, right? So I see, you know, that would be something, you know, that I could be accept very easily. But not, you know, a whole group of transients who are going to be there for six months to a year and move, right? That doesn't build a neighborhood. That doesn't build the character of the neighborhood. It's not in with the master plan that I knew and loved, you know, back in the day. And so I would really like to see us reject this plan in hopes that we get either somebody coming there, build townhouses, or, you know, a nice set of single-family homes, or maybe even the nursing home approval that was given before. So that's my points. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Folks, I just want to say, this is more like a judicial hearing than a football game. So I would ask that you restrain yourself from that expression as we go forward. Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public back here?
Hi, my name is Andrea Corallo, and I've lived at 611 West 4th for going on 17 years. I oppose this plan. My opposition to this plan is not anti-renter, it's not anti-investor, it's not anti-progress in Royal Oak. It's rather pro-neighborhood, pro-property value preservation, pro-property owner rights, and pro-adherence to the zoning master plan and future plan already established in the overlay area. Our overlay area, it's unique. It's not just single-family. The overlay was established because there's a lot of otherwise non-conforming buildings with other uses that predate the single-family zoning. And it was created because it needed to kind of like mitigate the fact that we're already at maximum density in terms of the fact that there's duplexes and apartments that don't have onsite parking, and there's churches, and then there's even a lot of very old single-family residential homes that don't have their own private driveway, because they share a driveway or they don't even have a driveway. So to drive up and down the streets on any given day, especially in the evening, they're packed. There's just not the space for more parking spots. Add to the fact that so many people are afraid of the new downtown parking robots, they park in our neighborhood too. Our neighborhood is the same as a nightclub at maximum capacity per fire code. Not letting additional patrons in is not to exclude them from the party, it's for the overall safety and enjoyment of those already here. I purchased my home relying on the zoning, and as a Realtor, I've sold countless others in our neighborhood to others who also relied on that same zoning. Approving such an egregious plan, it would be an example of spot zoning, and it would negatively impact myself and the others, and certainly something that would ultimately end up in court. I want to address the comment that the building is in disrepair, and so anything would be an improvement. Well, our neighborhood is not a desperate neighborhood in need of revitalization. Homes of the homes within a stone's throw are exceeding a half million dollars. If the unpermitted work that was begun on this building this past fall, before the city put a stop to it, is any indication of the quality that one can expect to be done with the final project, who's to say that even the completed project would be an improvement on the vacant building? At any rate, strategically allowing a property to be blighted over 10 years is not justification for approval of an objectively awful plan with one dozen deviation from zonings and ordinances. Approving this application defies all the principles that zoning seeks to fulfill. And it not only would affect our neighborhood, but it would set a dangerous precedence. Where would it stop? Single-family residential zoning means single-family residential zoning, period.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? Right here.
Shilling Pike, 325 South Maple Avenue. I've lived at this address behind 718 West 4th Street for 50 years. We've endured that structure and its issues since the addition was allowed to be built in 1974. Now there's an opportunity to have a project that enhances this vibrant, diverse neighborhood. The good news is that the owners want to use the existing building. I could support a reduced number of units that fit a multifamily residential zoning standards. There are some areas of concern with five of the eight exceptions to Chapter 770 zoning ordinance, as well as other applicable codes that are stated for this proposal. I have submitted details in an email that I sent on Saturday. Tonight, I'd like to speak specifically about the parking exceptions, number four through six. Parking spaces need to be angled. There's really not enough room to maneuver if the spaces are straight 90 degrees. Maneuvering has been an issue. We've had our fence hit and broken three times, our garage has been hit twice, and once, a car drove through the fence and into our house. According to the research I've done, a 90-degree stall, eight foot 10 inches wide, needs a minimum of a 20-foot maneuvering aisle for a compact car. The aisle width increases for standard stalls for standard cars. A two-way aisle width of 20 feet is required for 90-degree parking spaces, and a one-way width of between 12 feet and 15 feet is required for angled spaces, depending on the degree of the angle. South Maple already has quite a few cars parked in the street already. Homes without driveways, majority homes with single-family drives, rentals and residences with three to five cars, all that park in the street. There's no more room to park more cars. Enforce Section 770 107 of the zoning ordinance that two off-street parking spaces are required for each dwelling. Reduce the number of units so that there'd be enough off-street parking. Other areas of concern include the number of units, the screening wall, and garbage. The renderings on pages 15 and 16 appear to have the east and west elevations reversed, and do not show the garbage area, and do not show the other fenced area that's on the blueprint. The petitioner did not specify how the proposal would meet any of the criteria used by the planning commission. Conditional multifamily residential zoning is an option, but please require most of the zoning codes be met. This is an opportunity to start a new chapter for our neighborhood. We hope the petitioners would have some dialogue with the neighbors to ensure a positive neighborhood environment. Planning commission members and city staff, thank you for serving Royal Oak residents.
Thank you. Are there other, other members of the public who'd like to speak? Yes, come on up. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Lori Eisenhardt, and with my husband, Richard Doyle. We're residing at 413 South Pleasant. We're here to oppose the rezoning proposal for the property. We bought our home in 1988, 35 years ago, choosing this area for the diversity, enjoying the Presbyterian churches, activities with groups like the Bag Peppers practicing their tunes in the parking lot, watching bridal parties and other festivities at the women's club right across the street. As South Pleasant is the first street west of the downtown without permit parking, people heading into the downtown, parking our street and in the church parking lot during the day and into the night. While we love the activity in the area, obviously, parking is a big issue. Many homes nearby are also serving as rentals, some without driveways. And in addition to this, the apartment building at the end of our alley, 601 West 4th Street, under renovation for a few years, is now being completed. Records show that there are 15 units in that space. There is no onsite parking, so theoretically, 30 cars will soon be requiring spaces. The proposed plan for 718 West 4th is for 25 tiny studio and efficiency apartments. Potentially, 50 cars could require parking. The underground parking wasn't utilized when Alexander Mercy Living Center occupied the space. Steep entry and other issues caused staff and visitors to park elsewhere in our neighborhood. In this day and age, with all the giant SUVs and trucks, would it function any better? Provisions in the plan to utilize the underground parking neglect these issues, and planning for electric charging stations and other infrastructure to support this increase in population in this area. The demographics of the architectural design and the proximity to bars and restaurants most likely would attract young professionals to this type of rental. While we can all agree that we want to encourage young people to live, enjoy, and support our city, the fact remains that more than 25% of the Royal Oak population is projected to be 60 or older by 2030. This building is an excellent example of a space that could be renovated to provide housing or assisted care for seniors. This rezoning proposal sets an important precedent, not only for our little neck of the woods, but also for future planning and development of our city. Is this type of rezoning and reuse going to create meaningful improvements? How does it serve our community? We are living in a vibrant, vital area. We have the means and resources to make thoughtful, wise choices in planning and envisioning our Royal Oak. In this situation, many of my neighbors and I believe that, as eager as we are to see improvements come to this eyesore property, this is not a rezoning proposal we can support. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Right here in the second row. Right here in the second row.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Nordlama. I live at 313 South Maple. I grew up in Royal Oak. I lived on the other side of Catawba Shrine area. When I married my husband, we bought the house he grew up in. I had no idea there were houses without driveways. It was a shock to me. With that being said, it was an adjustment to move into that house and figure out parking. At the end of the street, we have a nursing home. And at that time, we didn't have any problems with parking because of them. We really didn't. I mean, sometimes they would park on the street, and sometimes we would have the leaves blown and picked up. We would just go down and say, remember today's leaf pickup, and they would make sure they moved their car if they had one. A lot of the employees took the bus or got dropped off. I saw them. I was a stay-at-home mom. An apartment building that has studio and one bedrooms doesn't mean one person in that studio. A bed can fit two people, which would mean two cars. So to say that there's going to be 25 cars, there's not. There's going to be more. It's not the right kind of building for that area. It's not. I thank you. I would love to see things happening. It's been a long time of that building sitting empty. And we were very excited about the nursing home coming in. We were happy about that. It was very nice. It was very nice. We would see some of the patients there at the nursing home, their families would come, and they have a porch area that they would sit at. Sometimes they would walk the neighborhood with their family members. We enjoyed that. This will not be enjoyable. This will be far from it. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood how the parking was, because like I said, I grew up in another part of Royal Oak. I had no idea. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who'd like to speak, right here.
My name is Frankenholt M.D. I home in the past 24 years at 809 West Fourth Street affords me easy, complete view of the 718 West Fourth Street property. I happen to be opposed to this specific proposal to rezone this property as multifamily. Please note that the area of this property is only 25,090 square feet, therefore appropriate for only seven multifamily dwellings, not to propose 25. Please note that the immediate neighborhood consists not only of long-established single homes, but also duplexes and some small apartment buildings, such that current street parking capacity is fully masked by the need. Adding 25 small studios and efficiency apartments would require 50 parking spots, especially over evenings and nights and weekends. The parking spots on the property, surface and basement, appear to be about 25. Parking on contiguous West Fourth would afford another seven. Predictably, the proposal conflicts majorly with current contiguous neighborhood parking needs, while also, by the way, ignoring the heavy traffic load on West Fourth Street. My inclination is that Royal Oak currently has ample rentals. Hence, there's need for more rentals is not a rationale for this proposal. I have good memories of how relatively gracefully the nursing home at this property fit in our neighborhood. Although it accommodated as many as 72 residents, parking accommodation conflicts were rare, simply because residents did not need parking, and the personnel parking needs temporarily complemented the needs of the neighborhood, for example, daytime versus evening versus night. I felt proud how our neighborhood helped to provide a safe and relatively quiet setting for these nursing home residents. So to pick up on this relevant neighborhood experience, why not match resource with need? Specifically alter this property for housing or assisted care for our seniors, for whom living in a stable neighborhood and finding downtown Royal Oak convenient would be very Such a conversion of the present property would, in that regard, would be a real value for our community now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other people in the audience, or members of the public who'd like to speak? Right here, yes.
Hello, my name is Michelle Muster. I live a block away from the property. I live at 302 South Pleasant Street, and I'm here regarding the property, 718 West Fourth Street. It is disheartening to see the deterioration of this site. Years ago, my neighbors and I supported the plan to convert it to assisted living. The plan was approved, but the owner did not act on it. Then there was a proposal to raise the building and build tall condos, which was denied, and we were pleased with that. Since then, it's been years of active neglect. Now we have a request to rezone from single-family to multifamily and a proposal for 25 units. While I am in support of a multifamily option, I am dismayed at the number of breadth of requested deviations. I looked at your decision-making criteria and found key information missing regarding criteria G's demand for this type of housing, so I did some research. Are there current rentals available in this area? After some research, I found in our immediate area and within walking distance to downtown, there are 14 studio unit vacancies, 64 one-bedroom unit vacancies. In addition, there's 15 one-bedroom units at 601 West Fourth Street that are being renovated, and the units will be rented as soon as they are available. Apartments.com also noted 57 more one-bedroom units available in homes, townhouses, and condos. This study shows that there is not a need for more than one-bedroom apartments. How does Royal Oak compare to other cities? From recent federal census data and websites that specialize in crunching this data, I found 34.8% of our housing stock is considered rental. We have more rentals than Huntington Woods, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Berkeley, Troy, and Claussen, and we have fewer rentals than Madison Heights, Hazel Park, and Oak Park. I am not opposed to a decent multifamily proposal, however, this is oversized and will not give us something we need or do not already have. Why provide the gift of a rezoning to a mundane and poorly conceived proposal? Conditioning rezoning is not something to be entered into lightly. This site could be a jewel. The recently approved Royal Oak Aging in Place Plan states we should aggressively market to developers and development sites become available for additional affordable or market-rate senior housing close to the central city and commercial services. Isn't this site the golden opportunity to put this commitment into action? Now, this would be worthy of a conditional zoning change. After all these years, the owner neglect, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. And here's a copy of my research.
All right, thank you. Any other member of the public would like to use a handout? Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Charlie Usher. I live at 419 South Maple with my wife, Paul. I've been there since 1990, just paid off her mortgage. We're glad to be part of the neighborhood. Parking has always been a bear on Maple, on Pleasant, on both sides of Fourth Street, along Fourth Street, in front of this building, across the other side, along Fourth Street. This is just going to exacerbate it. I don't think somebody's financial gain or loss should have bearing on whether or not they're granted, the city grants them rezoning to this type of use. I just think it seems like this developer's willing to do anything to get a yes vote from you all, except maintain the building in a proper fashion. I just saw kids running in and out of the building. They weren't securing it while they were doing their demolition, right on the west side of the building on Maple. Kids were going in and out of the building. These are not good property owners and managers, and I don't think they're going to be good neighbors, and I just don't think that it should be supported. Thank you.
All right. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? I see a hand right there.
Okay, I have a lot to say, I gotta squeeze it in.
Introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Dora Baltrosidas. I've lived at 320 South Pleasant for 30 years. I'm just two houses in from 718 West Fourth. I realize that on the surface, I may welcome this rezoning proposal and see it as a no-brainer. The property is an eyesore in a beautiful neighborhood. It's been vacant and neglected for at least 10 to 15 years, and it needs to change. Well, I agree. It is an eyesore, and it does need to change and be revitalized. However, I don't agree that this is the current rezoning proposal is the right answer for this property. The proposal asks for approval of nine deviations to the master plan, two of which are quite significant. One of the significant deviations is related to the volume of permissible dwellings. The proposal's asking to build 25 dwelling units in the space the Royal Oak master plan says there should only be seven. That is more than three times the volume. In addition to more traffic, it's just not a minor deviation, it's extremely dense. In addition to more traffic from 25 residents in that space, think of additional congestion from things like Amazon Prime deliveries, Instacart deliveries, DoorDash, Grubhub, et cetera. It's going to cause a lot of congestion in that space. The second significant deviation is in regards to parking. Based upon the master plan, with 25 dwellings, they should have two off-street parking spots per dwelling. They're only going to provide 25. The location only has 16 on-prem parking spots. They state that there's more in that underground parking building, but actually there isn't. It's not conducive to parking. Nobody parked underneath there during the nursing home, and it's too steep, so those are not really valid accessible parking spots. So where would the additional 34 parking spots come from? They'd be from the already strained street parking on South Pleasant, South Maple, and Fourth. Parking on our streets is already limited. This is due to the vast amount of existing apartments, duplexes, and housing rentals just within a two to three-block perimeter of the development site. Some of these challenges include 320, or excuse me, South Pleasant only allows parking on one side of the street, one side. On the east side of South Pleasant, from 11 Mile to Fourth Street, there are two four-unit apartments that have no onsite parking, and in addition, in that span, there are nine additional duplexes that are, seven or eight of them, which are rental properties. So essentially, local residential parking doesn't have the capacity to absorb the overflow parking that would be needed. All right, let me skip over. All right, I'm not against change. I too want the neglected eyesore at 718 West Fourth Street to be revitalized. I truly do. However, the proposal is not the answer. Please don't let this be a quick fix or the change that's good enough or better than nothing. Please consider the negative impact and changes this proposal would create and impact the surrounding neighborhood and vote no. Thank you for your time and the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? There's a hand right there.
Hello, my name is Scott Mester, and I live at 302 South Pleasant. I've been there 26 years. While I've been living there, I've observed a lot of different complications with the parking. Most of the residents in the one-bedroom apartments that are in our area all have two residents. And when you look at these small one-bedroom apartments, you have to realize it's going to be two people living there. I mean, spend any time in the area and you'll see that. Part of the problem with that, and the parking in that area currently, is getting the city services done. Things like plowing the street, incredibly difficult. When there's a snow emergency, there really isn't very many places to take your car to get it off the street. We really do our best, but it's difficult, if not impossible. Adding anything that adds more cars to that block is just going to further complicate an already complicated situation. I have some things here that other people have talked about, and I'm not going to bore you to death with hearing all that again, but I think that lot really deserves good development. I'd like to see something great there. This isn't it, and I oppose it. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? There's another hand right there.
Good evening. Thanks for having us, board members. My name is Marissa White. My husband and I have two school-aged children. We live at 317 South Maple for the past 18 years. We are the second house, so we can see the nursing home from our backyard and our windows. Our family would love to see improvement in the property at 718 West Fourth Street. Sadly, it has been in a state of deterioration and neglect for the past 10-plus years. Unfortunately, this proposal is so egregious that I must highlight my objections. My neighbors probably expressed their concerns with parking and density and surfaces better than I could ever express, so I will skip ahead to my real concern. In 2013, the owner of this property had the interior of the building gutted. Pipes and walls were removed, and then the building was shut down to rot. They sprayed landscaping with poison to avoid the need to cut grass and kill trees. Windows routinely broken out or opened by vandals. My neighbor, Shar, has called the police frequently to have things checked on in that building. The building continued to deteriorate until the summer of 2022, when suddenly, magically, a couple men appeared to start cleaning out materials inside the building. Now we know that that was against city code. I know at least one occasion when they were in code violation and had to cease work. The workers wore no protective gear. Apparently, they were cleaning out lead. One neighbor had to administer first aid to a young man there who was injured on the job. They had two 40-yard dumpsters in the parking lot for months, full to the top, when Shar had to make a call that somebody was inside the dumpster and called repeatedly to have them emptied. In October, despite the condition of the building, which we truly, I don't believe that a structural engineer has looked at this building. I would love to see documentation of that. They put a new roof on the building. I can only assume that that's because they believe that it's some way that they can turn this into apartments. I think that essentially, they'd like to flip this into micro-apartments. I don't know if they're going to turn into Airbnbs or turn into hotel rooms, as the gentleman had suggested. I oppose this because I think that... I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I just feel like this has not been a good neighbor and has not been in the best interest of the community. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Other members of the public, the audience, have a gentleman right here.
James Lamas live at 313 South Maple, three doors down. I've lived there for 58 years, so I've seen the whole gamut of this building and what's happened to it over the years. And honestly, we are, the whole neighborhood, we are not opposed to some kind of redevelopment of this property. It's been in desperate need of it. The building was not a real eyesore, but now it is. When they went in there and did the demolition over the summertime, there's busted-out windows, they're boarded up, they stripped the property of all the landscaping. There's one half of a tree left, and the other ones were just taken down. So now it's a mess. And they did that despite repeated cease-and-desist orders from the city. They started without permits, and then they were operating with cease-and-desist orders. They kept going on, and they just didn't care, which means not really good neighbors right now. But aside from that, we want to see something done with this building. It's been a long time. So we wouldn't be opposed to a smaller development there. I mean, something, obviously, under 15 units. Those 10 parking spots in the garage are non-existent. They can't park there. The angle that, the people who used to work in that building wouldn't park there because they would get stuck. Their cars would bottom out trying to get in and out of that parking lot. So they used it for storage for 30, 40 years. But we would... they used it for storage for 30, 40 years. Um, but we would like to see something, and we would just like to see something better. This is intrusive and an excessive development, and the parking is a nightmare. Thank you.
All right. Uh, anybody else in the audience, in the, of the public who would like to speak on this petition? All right, waiting a beep or two. Make sure that there isn't anybody. Appears that there is not, so I'm going to close the public hearing, part of this hearing, and bring it back to the side of the table, and ask our...
Before you go on, I'd just like to indicate there are several written correspondence that were attached that the planning commission did receive, just for the record.
Yes.
We saw, I saw those, some of them. All right, thank you. Um, all right.
Chair, we often will ask the applicant to, or give the applicant an opportunity to respond to some of the issues that have been raised in public comment. Do you, would you consider entertaining that?
Well, if that's, we brought it back to the side of the table. If that's your pleasure, then we should do that.
Okay.
Uh, can the petitioner, uh, return to the podium? You heard some of the concerns. Do you have any response?
Uh, you mean, like I said from the beginning, we're here to kind of work with you guys and with the neighbors. Uh, some, uh, I just got involved, maybe, when we submitted these projects. So I don't know much about the history of the building, but I know now that the owners, uh, there's one original owner, and now we have two, uh, two people went with him, and they want to do the project. So, uh, that's why I know that they are really pushing hard to get that project done. Uh, for the sake of, uh, the building itself, I wasn't sure about, we know that we did submit a, uh, approval for kind of demolition plan. Maybe it was not approved, so they, maybe they started before it was approved, but we did submit to the city some papers, and we did get the approval for the demolition. Uh, I want to go back to kind of what you started, and, uh, the owner does have no issues having it as a senior living place. Senior living mean, mean over 55 or over 60, and people will live in it and make it as apartment for that, so he has no issue with that. Even one of his, uh, comments, he was even, was willing to do that as senior living and providing food with it, like lunch, dinner, and, uh, so that, we don't have issue doing this kind of projects. We're not against senior. I'm going to be senior very soon, so I might be in that building. Uh, so we don't have issues with that. We're not saying younger or senior. If, if the, if the neighbors like seniors, the owner will work with that, and we can make it senior, senior housing for the seniors. And for the building itself, I mean, we're going from 98 to, to 44 units. We're going back to 25. 25, really, 25 cars. Uh, we didn't think that that's a lot in a, in a typical building. Uh, like the building was before us, they had 27, they had 27 cars, and we didn't hear any issue of that. I don't know why that, all this issue came on that building. And this is more walkable, and we're willing to make it as senior living. So we are providing one parking per unit, and that's why we thought that this is kind of doable, and that's what these cities work for. If the city think that they don't like it to be for younger generation, and they're willing to go with senior apartments or senior living, we are, the owner is willing to do that. We have this building. We need to do a project in it, and we need to make it happen. And most of the people who came here, they're talking about buildings that need to have something done, and that's what I understood from the owners, that that's what they want to fix it. The new owners that start involving with the original owner, uh, they're willing to do with it. They, they wanted to start the project, and the minute we got this approval, I think they're ready to, to do all, everything that what the city asked them to, to meet the requirement. And we're not going to get any permit unless we meet all the city requirements. So I think Tim can help me with that part. We need to submit construction documents. We need to meet with the requirement, with the neighbors, with the fencing, and, uh, if they're worried about the dumpsters, we can make it like it's part of a condo, and we make somebody come and clean it, so we don't have to put, like, uh, we have a dumpster, everybody do it, and one truck come and clean it once a week, like typical. So we try to make schedule for that, to make it good for the, for the problem, for that issue. So we're not going to be putting, uh, garbage if each unit in the front. So they have a place, they all throw it in, one, once a week or twice a week, a truck can come and pick it up and goes. So we're trying to make it as clean as possible. That's what I understood. That's what the owner told me, and that's why I submitted these drawings.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt because I want to ask the que, uh, a specific question, and others may have questions as, as well. Um, so, um, given the history of the building and the neglect, it seems to be pretty well documented, and the, um, the demolition, the unpermitted demolition that was, that took place, um, what assurance do we, does the neighborhood have that the, um, development will be conducted in a responsible manner?
Actually, I think they know now from the city that they told them that you can't do any work unless you get a permit, and we want to make sure that, if I'm involved in it, we want to make sure that we submit all the permitting, we get the subcontractors, and they're going to start working with the city and the inspector, because now the demolition is done, or whatever, it needs to be finished. But once you get to building, they have to meet with the mechanical inspector, with the roofing inspector, with the mechanical inspector. So now they have to go through the whole process. They can't do any construction unless they meet these requirements, and if, and if our seal and our company is in it, we have to make sure that this is what has to be done. And I'm hoping that that's what will be done, or they're going to be, close them again and not let them finish the construction.
Well, and, and that would be a concern, given the performance of the owners heretofore, that you get your permits, you get all your building designs, and then the deal falls apart again, and we are once again left with a vacant and now interior demol, demolished building.
Uh, I'm an architect. I can't answer that question, but as I'm seeing, that now they're coming and they're willing to do the work. Uh, one, one neighbor said that they did put the roof. The roof was put to keep, meet the requirements because we don't want any water to go into the building and create issues. So that's why we, we had to put the roof. And the windows, if you go by this plan, there's a lot of windows going to be relocated. There's more demolition has to be done, so everything will have to be approved. Erosion fans have to be put, whatever the city requirement's going to be put, and they did ask us for landscaping and any other thing that the city might ask. According to the drawings and the codes, we have to meet it, and the owner is here, I mean, one of the owners. Uh, he can answer that he has to meet these requirements. I mean, as an architect, I want to make sure that the owner has to meet it. It's not a choice, because I work with cities every day. I'm doing a lot of project in the city of Royal Oak, and I want to make sure that the projects and the reputation is right, so.
Mr. Leal will, oh, there he is, will tell me I can't ask this question after I ask it. Um, so, but I'll, I'll start, and you just tell me no. Um, do you have the funding to complete this project?
I think they do. I mean, they actually now, there are three partners, and that's why the original, the original, uh, person, he couldn't do it by himself, so that's why he brought two partners with him to finish the project. And the two partners just started with him a year ago, so, or maybe nine months ago. So he couldn't do it by himself, and now he brought two people to actually do the construction and help him with the whole process.
And what are their backgrounds?
They're builders. The original owner is a doctor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we've had a lot of comment about the building being in disrepair for 10 years, and I understand that. I don't live across from it, so I have the privilege of trying to put myself in both the neighbor's shoes and the property owner's shoes. Is there a narrative or a story that you can tell us, um, why it has been in disrepair, and maybe talk a little bit about the permit issue? Um, is it that there's been a lack of, lack of financing? Has there been, um, you know, some rough starts? Is it that the developers or the, the builders needed additional partners, or like, why for 10 years?
I was not involved into that. I just started getting involved into the project nine months ago. But, uh, as I understood from the original doctor, he bought it, uh, and, uh, he, he went through rezoning, not rezoning, to get approval for the senior living, and he was supposed to have another doctor with him so that he would run the location. And, uh, the other partner, at that time, the doctor decided to go out of town. So I think there's...
What year is that approximately?
I think they get the approval maybe in 2013. The final approval was 2016. So that 2016. Uh, and since that time, uh, the, the doctor itself, he's trying to do something. So many people tried to kind of buy the building and tried to do work with him with assistant living, and three projects from that just got dropped because he couldn't do it by himself. And that's why now I am in that situation, that there's the two builders with him, that they're also developers, that they're going to do the project, and he just kept them, he helped them with the money, and he submit the property, and they do the whole project, so. Because he couldn't do it by himself. He's a hard doctor, and he couldn't do it. He's, he has like five, six offices. It's not, they think it's a business, but it's not. It's a lot of work to do projects like this, so.
Okay. Mr. Els.
As an architect, have you worked with this, this individual before, this group before?
Actually, with the, with, uh, with the, with the doctors.
Yeah, with the guys who were doing this project?
Yes, yes, we did. Uh, I, I met them. We did two projects with them, but they're not in the city of Dehbo, so.
Did the...
Commercial projects.
Did the projects go off without any complications? Did they get built on time? Did they run over budget?
Oh, absolutely, and I did work with the doctor. That's how I met the doctor. I did three medical centers for him, and the three medical center were done. One in Southfield, one in Dearborn, and one in, uh, Warren.
These are just medical office building fit-outs, or?
No, no, actually, one of them was new build-outs, uh, new building, and two of them, they're just new, we took an existing building and we changed it to a medical center.
You don't remember any problems with, with the municipal government they dealt with?
The, the doctor doesn't have time. He hired a builder, and they did...
Well, I'm talking, I don't care what the doctor tells. I care what the project, did the project...
No, 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 no. Financially, they're comfortable.
The project didn't run into any snags?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, you can? I want to address the issue with the demolition. So we got involved with the project less than a year ago. Apparently, there was a demolition permit pulled back in 2015. We were involved when, uh, at that point. They went in, they did demolition of property, they removed all the interior walls, none of them were load-bearing. So when we came in, uh, last year, we were just cleaning out the building. We weren't doing any demolition at that point. Still, you needed a demolition permit, so, excuse me.
Pretty young to install a car.
Yeah, everything was demolished inside the building, so we were cleaning it out. We were, we were, uh, informed by code enforcement that you, for a clean-out, you need a demolition permit. So to, to get a demolition permit, you have to have architectural drawings. So we said, okay, we're going to have to get this demolition permit for the clean-out. Let's go ahead. We're going to pay for the drawings and do a full demo. So we removed everything. And beyond that, there's been, uh, no issues of permit or code enforcement. We got our permit for the roof. The building was, the roof was leaking. The reason, uh, in my talks with the owner, the doctor, like Hassan said, he's a very busy, uh, doctor. He had a property manager, and they were just neglecting the building, so. And as far as the trees that we cut down, they were all growing into the roof. They were separating the, uh, the brick facade from the actual block. I mean, they had to be cut down and cut back and removed. Um, and that's where we're at now. So we don't anticipate any stags. We're well-funded. Financially, we can meet our obligation. We're both builders. We have the background, so, uh...
So you're saying the project manager wasn't keeping up with his responsibility?
The property manager.
Okay, and the property manager still connected to the doctor at all?
No, no.
They've separated?
He's, he's no longer involved with the building.
So we're not talking about the same person anymore? We've got new property manager? Is that you, or is it someone else?
We're managing the property. We've got a new insurance agent, everything, yes.
Okay, so we've got a whole new operating team to do the building.
Yes.
Separate, separate from all the previous approvals and all the previous screw-ups.
Correct. And another thing, there will be onsite management. So, uh, as some, uh, neighbors mentioned, well, who do you go to? There will be onsite management for this, uh, project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I...
Commissioner Douglas?
I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to this. So of the conditions that you have to meet for rezoning, um, one of them is evidence should document the applicant cannot receive a reasonable return on investment through developing the property with one or more of the principal permitted and special land uses under the current zoning. Um, you could, the planning staff has, has said that you could build two and probably squeeze in three, uh, single-family homes on that site. They would be big homes. Um, those are selling, well, those aren't selling for what they were selling for a year ago, but still, um, you could realize a rate of return on those homes, and it has been pointed out, the original purchase price for this property was, um, fairly low. Um, so have you explored single-family development? And I say that not wanting to demolish, uh, an existing property. Um, you know, the, the greatest form of conservation is actually adaptive reuse, but nevertheless, have you explored, um, that possibility?
Yes, it's not, it's not economically feasible. It's not, there won't be a return on it. And as far as, um, going back to a senior living, that's like, that's an active business. That's not something that myself or any of my partners want to, we don't want to run facility. We, we'd rather, you know, we're aiming towards, uh, something like this.
No, and I appreciate that, and I'm not asking for that.
But what she's saying, you can have senior living, you don't have to have assistant living.
It's, it's one thing to market the, the future units to seniors, which they would try.
I'm sorry, I meant assisted living, not senior. I meant assisted living facility.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to active...
And I'm not making a case for that.
Yeah. And yes, breaking it up into, uh, four or even seven single-family homes is not, uh, it's not economically feasible. It's not a viable project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Um, okay, and I got one quick question. Um, I have been to the site, but I didn't really look at that ramp going down to the basement. Uh, you heard some comments about that the, that the people didn't, during the nursing home days, the convalescent home day, they didn't use it because of the ramp. Uh, tell us about that.
It's usable.
Yeah, it's usable. I mean, we're going to be regrading. We're going to be, uh, I think, uh, we were told we have to pour new concrete in the alley, so if it needs any regrading, you know, if it's determined that it's not, we will, uh, we'll address that. But it's an essential part of our, uh, plan for parking underneath, and we planned also to put, uh, charging stations down there.
All right, okay, thank you. Other questions for the petitioner? All right, seeing none, I guess, uh, I will ask you to have a seat, but don't go too far because we might have other questions. All right, commissioners, um, we're back on the side of the table. Do we have questions for Mr. Twing? Comments for each other? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, Mr. Twing, um, help me reading the, the site plan here. Um, have they proposed a masonry wall along the rear property, the north property line?
On the north side of the alley? No.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say now, I have been past the site, and the, one of the neighbors uses the alley for access to their garage, so I don't know how that would work to put screening there. You'd have to have a, you'd have to have an opening in it. I don't know if anybody looked at that, but, um, all right, other comments? Okay, I guess, uh, I'll, I'll make a couple comments here, then get things going. So parking is a big, uh, issue, uh, that we've heard tonight, and, um, so, a couple things. Uh, we also heard the petitioner compare it to the previous project. Well, the previous, uh, project, most of the units were in the mid 400s, high 400s, and the petitioner specifically said these are going to be single-use, so I assume that's where their market is, and it might be true here too. I would say that this, I looked at the site plan, actually, m, m, most of the units that I'm looking at are the 582, 600, 595, 568. There are some in the 300s, but most of them are about 100 feet bigger than the Troy Street project we looked at. Does that mean there's going to be more people in them? It could mean that. Uh, but I would also say that people who are going to move into a place, uh, are going to know that they're only going to have one parking space. So if you've got two cars, uh, you're going to be, you know, you're going to be less inclined to rent an apartment with only one space. So I think the market will, uh, take care of some of that, but indeed, I understand the concerns of the neighbors that... that if you get some people who are perfectly willing to rent with two people and they only have, and they have two cars, and willing to try to find a place in the street, that could definitely add to the congestion. I would also say, I want to pick up on something that Commissioner Douglas said. Tearing down the building, that's not really environmentally friendly if you can reuse the building. So we like that. And I have a question for Mr. Twing. So this was a convalescent center for a long, long time. And if I understand the overlay district rules, if they change it to anything except the convalescent center, they have to meet all the zoning requirements of the single-family home or seek variances. Is that correct?
If they wanted to put single-family homes in, yes, they would have to comply with that. I believe staff's review indicated that you potentially could get three lots on this site that comply.
Yeah, well, you would have to tear down the building to do that. What I'm saying, if they wanted to, somebody wanted to do an adaptive reuse here, it either has to be a convalescent center, or they're gonna face some of the same difficulties. They're gonna have to ask for all these variances, whatever it is.
Yeah, most of the deficiencies are related to the existing configuration of the site.
Okay. And of course, the building is there. And so, you know, if you want to save the building and you want to use it for something, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to grant variances, is my point. If you want to use it for anything except the convalescent center. I do have some concerns about the density of the project. I hear the neighbors speaking. I think that their concerns are valid. I think they're probably more pertinent than with the other project we saw, which was in a different spot in the city. This is definitely in the neighborhood. And indeed, the overlay district rule, it seemed to encourage this should be a single-family or something less, lower density. So those are my concerns about it, however. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, the question for Mr. Twing. With the parking, a comment came up, and I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. You know, the way that the parking is allocated at 25, the site plan would meet all of the typical maneuverability standards for parking, meaning egresses, ingresses, and parking space size, the ability to move cars around. It's not, so they would be able to meet the parking standards, contemporary parking standards to get to that number.
Some of them do, in terms of the dimensional requirements. Some of them are nine by 20, particularly the ones towards the south, whatever the east property line is. Those are all nine by 20. They would have to make some changes to the ones that are labeled one through 11 in order to make compliance.
Okay.
Okay, dimensionally. The alley is only 15 feet wide. Generally speaking, you'd prefer the 20-foot aisle for two-way movement. But the ordinance does allow on angle spots down to 12 feet in width. So it depends on the configuration. Once you get into the site plan, the provisions you want to apply.
That's my other question at the moment.
Okay. And again, in order to meet even the standards that they're proposing, one unit, one parking space, they need the basement. They need the underground parking, yes?
In order to, yes, that gets them to 25.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions, or motions? Motion?
Maybe I'll fill the void.
You go right ahead.
So I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I think your concerns are legitimate. I'm not one, as a person living in that neighborhood, not to say whether the concerns are, you know, wrong or right. As a matter of being an evidentiary board here, we have to do a couple of different things. We have to piece together a story as far as what is happening, what is best for the community overall, considering impacts on the neighborhood, considering the impacts on the actual property order themselves, because property owners in the state of Michigan have a tremendous amount of rights. Ergo, you see a building there that's had a journey for 10 years. I'm guessing part of that journey is a really busy cardiologist that bought a property, knew it was a really good deal, and probably got a little bit outside his ability to do anything. Brought in some people in the next year, or the last year, and that's why we're seeing, you know, obviously, some revived activity to rehabilitate the property and make it, you know, a financial return for the owner and something that is at least somewhat congruent with the neighborhood. I do believe, I'm running numbers in my brain, you know, if you just follow the single-family residential, I don't know how anybody who, you know, if they sell this property on a fire sale, I don't know how they make money on it at $250 a square foot to build contemporary interest rates, access to materials. You know, you're looking at 500,000 plus, you know, a 2,000-square-foot home at 250 bucks versus the average going rate, 200,000 to demo the building. It's gonna be a challenge to get something that fits the exact, you know, single-family. Even if you go to four to seven, it's gonna be a real challenge to do that, I think, financially, which creates a situation in the marketplace, whether it's these owners or some other owners, you know, that financial, the physics of the situation are gonna create, you know, a situation where you could see this blighted property exist for much, much longer. Or you could find, you know, someone that wants to do something a little different. But, you know, the fact is, they own the property. They have something in front of us. Other folks don't, right? So this is what we have to evaluate right now. The parking, I get, I struggle because of my vocation. We look at parking a lot. A lot of cities are actually moving away to zero parking minimums. We approved a project on 11 Mile, just right in my neighborhood. I drive by it every single day, taking my kids to school. 400 to 500 square feet, let's see, Amber on 11. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it. Almost a similar, I mean, it was brand-new built. It wasn't a rehabilitation. But that parking lot's empty all the time. No complaints of any of the, Amber on 11.
How many units?
Oh, I think we're 25, 30, maybe? Maybe 37? Was it 37? So similar footprint. You have a building right up to 11 Mile Road with a parking lot in the back. There were some concerns from neighbors about folks parking in the streets. We haven't seen that at all. In fact, the parking lot is empty just based on, you know, the way the world is going with parking. And that's outside of a downtown. So, I mean, we can debate the facts, but I have the floor right now. So we'll stay here and just let you know what I observe and the data that I have. So I don't know that that will be a significant issue, given what we have already in place throughout the community and what we see happening in other communities, what the trend is nationally and globally related to parking requirements. But there are also, you know, subsequent remedies, whatever goes in here. If there is a more, a higher use than three single-family homes, there are other alternatives we can look at in terms of parking and permit parking on streets and things of that nature. As far as like the other project, we do have to consider globally in the community, the need for housing, the need for this type of housing, that is transitional housing, for people that may be wanting to age in place, move out of their three- or four-bedroom home, you know, two-story home, into something that's more affordable, more simple, albeit, it doesn't look like it's designated as a, you know, 55, 60-plus. Units like this do afford that opportunity. Maybe something that, given how I grew up, given where I come from, I'm a little sensitive to it. So I'm not judging anybody that made this comment, just trying to let you know from my perspective. We heard a little bit about transitional people in apartments. We heard, I think there's a quote here that talked about in one of our letters, that moreover, expansion of existing two-family or multifamily uses may result in the destruction of neighborhoods in which they are situated, and thus result in long-term blighting effect. I couldn't disagree more. I live right off Lincoln. We have several multifamily units in my neighborhood. I feel that those renters are an equal and important part of the fabric of our neighborhood. And I don't think my property value has degraded or degenerated because we have people renting in those neighborhoods. I think my neighborhood's beautiful. I think it's really nice.
So Chair, I have the floor.
Excuse me, I don't have a gamble, but...
No, I'm-
Please.
So, I mean, while I understand and certainly understand the issues and concerns related to having a change, you know, there are alternatives, and the alternative is a status quo. The alternative is we deny something and wait for something better. I'm not sure, based on the history of this property, if that is always in the best interest of the community. But we look at something that is a balance with community needs, as well as, you know, rehabilitating a property that will work for everyone. So I think some of the concerns brought up, and I appreciate the question about why this property was left in disrepair for 10 years, why permits weren't pulled. I appreciate the owner coming up and speaking to that, because that is a concern for me as far as does that portend what the property manager will be like in the future. So I appreciate that explanation, appreciate your willingness to answer it and be called to the rug to answer it. So there's a lot to consider here. I'm interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. I just wanted to speak my mind as far as some of the things that were brought up in public comments, some of the concerns, address those, and really just let people know, be transparent where my head's at.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Gantino?
So I've been staring at a paragraph in our packet for a little while that states, "The petitioner must specify what conditions are offered and what recognizable and material benefits these conditions will achieve." And that's where I seem to struggle the most. I think we've all agreed that adaptive reuse of this building would be a preferred path and strategy, and certainly housing would benefit. I am struggling to see what conditions a petitioner has offered and what material benefits they offer for us to consider this rezoning. It is a rezoning request at the end of the day, and I'm having trouble seeing what's being offered to consider that rezoning request right now. You know, all of the explanation about the history of the owners and their ability to be good neighbors and manage this property appropriately aside, what's in front of us in terms of the project that's been placed in front of us, again, I just, I struggle to see what's been offered up that would bring material benefits that would justify this rezoning request in my mind. So I'm gonna have a hard time supporting this proposal.
All right, Mr. Ellison.
Okay, let me take my crack at it. The development that the mayor was talking about a little bit earlier, 11 Mile Studio Apartments that had no car. It's on a bus line, and many of those residents use the bus. And that's why there's little cars. This development, although personally, I'd rather see it as focused on senior living rather than... But I don't think it's gonna be a development that's gonna attract two people. I mean, I love my wife, but I wouldn't want to live in a single room with her, okay?
She feels the same.
Yeah, she feels the same way. But so I think the units will be marketed to young singles or older singles or whatever. But also with Fourth Street being there, and we have yet to see the new transit plan that we voted on last year that's gonna put more buses on the street. So, you know, we advocate for a bus line on Fourth Street. It's a perfect street for it. So that can mitigate a lot of those car problems. And we've seen at work, when we have studio apartments, it's usually one person living in there. Do we run into problems when someone comes to visit? Sure. But who does it? And this city, and I've been a victim of it, and myself, spend a whole lot of time trying to figure out how to keep cars off our streets. Okay? These are public streets, paid with our tax dollars. Everybody has a right to use them. I live on a street that's a cutoff. I live on Mohawk, which is a cutoff of 696. And I get upwards of 1,500 cars a day. But it's a public street, taxes are paid, they're allowed to use it. So if we've got, you know, a unit here that's gonna have 25 units, maybe 25, maybe some have, you know, friends over, who knows, 30 people. But if you look at the traffic pattern of the cars, like I said on the previous one, you've got cars in the morning to leave and go to work, and cars in the afternoon that come back, okay? And that's during the day. So the cars aren't there during the day for the most part, because people are working, the cars are there. And then maybe at night, a couple times. But it's really not a huge impact of traffic into the neighborhood. And most likely, they'll be leaving the neighborhood by going up Fourth Street. Now, will they cut out Maple or Placid to get over 11 Mile Road? Surely will. But it's their neighborhood, too. If they live in that neighborhood, they're gonna be able to do that. That's their right as a neighbor. In my neighborhood, mistakes were made years ago when people petitioned to have barricades put up. And so they have barricaded my entire neighborhood. Like I say, I live in Mohawk. I can't get to Main Street without going out to the Expressway or to Lincoln, because I can't cut through my neighborhood streets, because people are so concerned about traffic on their streets that they got the city to put these barricades up. And for the life of me, I can't understand it. That's my neighborhood. I can't get to the Holiday Market without going on Main Street. And, you know, unless I jump over the barricades that are at the end of Harrison, which is right in front of my house. So, I mean, that's, we hear these complaints, or these comments about all the traffic, all the traffic. But if you really take the time to look at it, you really don't have that much traffic. Even with the traffic that I encounter in my street, it's not unbearable. And again, most of it's people going to work in the morning, come back in the afternoon. This guy cuts up my street all the time because that's the way for him to get to his house, because he lives on the other side of Lincoln. But it's his street, too. And so everybody's entitled to, people move in the neighborhood, they're allowed to use. So I don't put a lot of credit in increased traffic. Traffic is something we live with in an urban area. I'm talking. Okay? So I think the parking issue, I think, is something that can be mitigated, especially once you get the transit plan from the county. Again, I would prefer it be more for, not necessarily assisted living, but housing that's general, that's geared for seniors, wide doors, that kind of stuff. I'm not sure where I'm at on the zoning here, but even with that type of process, I think we'd still have to have multifamily zoning. But I think we're mitigating it by, number one, the assets are reusing the building, which I think is a beautiful building in spite of its disrepair. Try to reuse the building. Can they consolidate and put in 20 units and still make it work? I don't know, but I'm not sure if that's necessary. But yeah, I'm still gonna hear what my colleagues have to say. But I don't think it's a bad development. It's not the worst development, but one of my issues with, that's what I was asking the questions before. If we're dealing with the same owner, are we gonna have the same problems? And that's my concern. That's why I asked him who the management company was, but it's a different management company, and they've got a proven track record of getting projects done. That's why I asked the architect. He's worked with them, and they've gotten other projects done with this same team. So the chances are good, better, that we're gonna get a good, I know you're all skeptical. You know, I spent 30 years in construction. I know how it works. And there's good guys and mad guys. And we can guarantee we got good guys. We can have a beautiful project there. It's gonna be an asset to not only the project, except for the neighborhood. And before you know it, it'll blend into the background, and it'd just be like another neighbor. But anyways, that talked enough. Thank you.
Okay. I'll, oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna thank both the mayor and Mr. Ellison for saying things that I had noted to say.
They've always said it before you.
Yeah, for years, actually. I will point out that over the past, I'm gonna say 10 years, the planning commission has consistently, developers have consistently indicated that they can get financing for their buildings without having two parking spaces per unit. The market is telling us that fewer people, you know, younger people don't want to own a car. We're seeing micro-units developed, which really do only have one person, because, you know, as the mayor says, even if you're, you know...
Yeah.
You don't want to share a 300-square-foot space with another person. So I'm not concerned about the parking. We talk about visiting, and, you know, this weekend, maybe somebody has a guest, but then again, maybe somebody who lives there is visiting somewhere else. To the mayor's point, the development, the micro-units at 11 Mile and either what, Gainesboro? I drive by there almost daily and never see that parking lot full at any time of day or night. So you're sort of like, I feel like you can't be mad at the previous neglect of this property and then be mad that somebody is coming and trying to improve it. I hope that we can trust the presenters here today to do what they say, sorry. I hope that we can trust the presenters here today to do what they say, sorry. I talk loud, but, you know, at some point, we as a commission have to act in good faith and trust that other people will act in good faith too, so. There was talk about reducing the number of units in the building, but that would just mean larger units that could accommodate two people and then you wind up with the two of them having two cars. So I think reducing the number of units is self-defeating. Mr. Gantino wondered about the material benefit of this project. I would say blight removal is a material benefit. We're looking at a property that's been neglected that's now gutted. And if this project doesn't go through, how long are we going to have to wait? And how much more neglect are we going to have, are they going to have to look at before something else happens? So I would, that sways me, but, and as you pointed out as well, the other thing that sways me is adaptive reuse. We're not knocking this thing down and dumping it all in a landfill somewhere in order to build new material, you know, something with all new materials. We're reusing a, it's not historically designated, but it does have a history in our city. And I think that has merit. So that sways me.
All right. I'm gonna comment. I don't think I can support this project and I think that I gotta make sure that we've got this right side up instead of upside down. The petitioner is not entitled to this relief. The petitioner has the burden to come before us and you notice that I always start the conversation by saying, "Come before us and tell me why you're entitled this relief." Because they've got the burden to come forward and tell us why. Unlike the other project, this isn't in a transition zone. This is in a neighborhood. There's never been a use like this before here. It's, the future land use for changing the use would be single families. So you can go down the criteria and while there are some criteria they meet, there's a lot that they don't. This would be an isolated spot zone. The street system doesn't sound like it accommodates if there's extra parking. It's compatible with the surrounding area. We often, we all know this, as we sit up here in the planning commission and people come in and they do a lot of opposing what's being proposed. In this case, every single person who spoke was opposed to it and every single person was in the neighborhood. I think that does carry some weight because they live there and we didn't hear anything on the other side. That's a concern to me. It's not, is there a trend here where we're putting multifamily in this neighborhood? I didn't hear anything like that. I ride my bike through this neighborhood. I know that there is duplexes and other multifamily, but is there an influx? Is there a trend? We didn't hear anything about that. I don't think there is. This has never been multifamily. This building has never been used for an apartment, a high-density apartment. It's always been a convalescent home. And so I just don't think that this petitioner has made their case. And unlike the Troy Street where they came before us and said, "Oh, we have an economic situation here. Not only are we gonna do a tear down and build new, we're gonna put a whole bunch of expensive materials. We're gonna put solar panels, we're gonna put expensive windows." I think that's a stronger case to say, "Hey, I can't, I can't make money unless you let me have 27 units." Here, the building exists, apparently was already demoed, so really, they just have to fill it in. I'm not sure, I agree that they can't make money either. I don't think the petitioner made their case. So I'm not gonna support this project. Chair, comment?
No, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Motions?
I'll make a motion. I move that we recommend the conditional rezoning to the city commission because it's their decision with the contingencies outlined in the, by the staff, adding to those the establishment of a fence along the northern property line at the will of the two adjacent property owners. That is, if they want a wall, then the developer will build the wall. But I say this because the adjacent property on Pleasant Street is using the alley as their driveway and I would think that they probably would want to continue to use that. So I would make it optional for the property owners. And I think I'm done.
Okay, let me see if I got this. The motion is to recommend the conditional rezoning with the list of contingencies except that the screening on the north alley would be at the option of the two adjacent landowners.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
For purposes of discussion, I'll support it.
Motion seconded, okay. Now we do have some discussion.
If I could, here.
Yes, yes.
One of the big advantages to me in this project is the saving of the building because the building fits the character of the neighborhood. So it leads me to believe, what are our other options? If we say, "No, you can't do this" and we gotta go back, and I did some calculations here, possibly for new houses. And what are the houses you're gonna get? You're not gonna get houses like you've got in a neighborhood. You're gonna get the brand-new houses that you see popping all over the city if they're even gonna afford to do that. So that's not gonna be what you want either. It may have less people, but it's, you know, it fits the zoning without any question. What he's offering here is kind of unique, saving the building, putting in a new type of resident for your neighborhood. In many cases, don't cheat, yeah, I mean, you never said. It's on Fourth Street, which is a busy street. It's a collector's street, so it handles bar traffic. It's close to downtown, so you're gonna get young singles moving into these places so they can walk to work, so they don't have to drive their car. I mean, it fits, it fits the criteria better than 1201 East 11 Mile Road, this is all we're talking about, which according to your thing here, it's 36 studio apartments, only two of them are available. So the market is there. They have 34 of those things filled already. And as we said, there's no cars in the parking lot because they're using public transportation. And that's the type of resident that we are attracting to Royal Oak. No one's buying large family homes anymore. They're just too expensive in Royal Oak. People are looking to move out or they're just moving in other cities where you can afford. My son just bought a house in Hazel Park because he couldn't get in Royal Oak. I mean, it's, that's the market right now. But he's married, he can't live in a studio apartment. So there's a definite market for this. So the market is there, the building is there. It's a good solid, it's got good bones, it's a good building. And so, you know, it would work. And I think the impact, right now, you've got that fear factor bringing something new into your neighborhood.
All right, the audience should, the audience should be advised that, like I said, this is like, more like a courtroom. This is not Jerry Springer. So I'm gonna ask the folks to please maintain the quorum, be polite. Thank you.
I poked them. They reacted.
I didn't tell you to be polite.
I know, I mean, I, you know, just like everybody else does. And it's, I forgot what I got, what I poked them about now. I'm sorry? I did not. Not in the least, no. Not in the least that I call you racist. I'm talking, these are young professional people. I'm not talking about any color. There are gonna be multiple colors. I don't care. But these are the young people that we're getting into Royal Oak, to the futures of Royal Oak. This is what has caused Royal Oak to burst like it has, is the influx of young people. And when I was mayor, I checked, I tested that theory over and over again. I asked people, "I just moved into Royal Oak." I said, "Why'd you move into Royal Oak?" "Well, because I liked it downtown and I came in and I met my wife and we decided we'll stay in Royal Oak because we got ourselves an apartment and now we're gonna raise family." I mean, this is a story that has repeated itself and you're nodding your head. You know that's the truth. So we build the units like this, single units, studio apartments. We attract people into the city, we sell them on the city. They pick Royal Oak to be the city that they're gonna live in with their partner and then they buy the house and then pay the taxes. I mean, that's the way municipal government works. I've been playing this game now for almost 20 years and I know how to do it. These units are not bad. And again, the extra bonus he's offering us is the reuse of an existing building, making it look better. If we don't go with this, it's either gonna sit there empty forever or you're gonna, it's something that you don't want. It just, I convinced myself I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just trying to go back and forth in my mind, what would be an alternative here that any developer would want to put here? And I just don't see how they would be able to, at current market rates or even lower rates, buy this and fit the zoning of single-family homes. Density is the only way to recover. Density would require some sort of variance or conditional rezoning, which we're here today to talk about. And, you know, we've seen other proposals in the past, putting in, tearing it down and putting in, you know, townhome condos. You know, I don't know that you're gonna find anybody out there that's gonna say, "Let's wipe it clean, pay the money to tear down the building, to demo it, and then build some homes, three homes, everything that comes with that, and try to market it at a rate that would be competitive." I just, the math doesn't work. I don't think, at least for the risk tolerance of any developer, to do it, but I could be wrong. But it just, I mean, rough numbers show that there is a, there's a reason why it's been sitting. I think that, I get it. It's changed. It's gonna be different if it goes through. There are gonna be new neighbors, there will be increased activity. There's no doubt about that. You'll see more people, more cars, more dogs being walked, things of that nature. Based on what we've seen, I don't think you'll see, you know, parking constraints or issues. 25 residential uses the lowest intensity use that you can have based on our zoning. You know, we typically, I mean, you know, Mr. Ellison was talking about his road has 1,500 cars. I work from home a few days a week and I sit in the kitchen and I have a lot more than him because of all those burms. They all come, in fact, I see him quite a bit in his bright yellow car. You need to slow down, by the way. So, you know, it's, you know, the feelings that you have are real. I can't, you know, reject those feelings or say, tell you not to feel it. All I can do is look at just historical evidence and professional data that says that the parking impact here is not gonna be a significant issue. I will say, any questions about how rentable dwellings will affect or create blight in the neighborhood, I will just tell you, I wholeheartedly reject that. I'm not calling anybody racist. I'm not saying, I'm just saying that's not a fact to me at all. So I can't be persuaded by that argument. I could be persuaded by the argument of that these were bad owners, which it sounds like for a decade, maybe they weren't bad people, but they were bad property owners because they bit off more than they could chew. But now they've brought together and recognized the issue, a team that can actually do something about it. And the question is, you know, if not this, you know, it's gonna be something like this to make it work. I just, I don't see any, other than a remaining vacant and somebody sitting on it as an asset for another 10 years hoping to cash in on inflationary, you know, REIT pressures. I don't know that you're gonna get, you know, single-family housing or even something of less density because the math just isn't there. So we might be back here again with another development with the same concerns. And ultimately, we have a vacant building there right on one of the main entrances coming into our downtown, into our city. You know, it's right now, in my opinion, people coming off Woodward down Fourth into our beautiful Fourth Street neighborhood there, coming into our vibrant downtown. This is one of the things they see and like, "What the hell's going on in Royal Oak?" So I'm empathetic to everything you're saying. I'm just trying to figure out, as a city leader, like, what is the alternative? This is not a slam dunk either way, but, you know, a bird in the hand might be worth more than, you know, nothing in the bush. So I'm gonna be supporting the motion, but I don't want it to go without saying that, you know, it's not like a slam dunk, but I just, I can't, you know, we have to make decisions based on all the evidence and that's where I stand.
All right, thank you. Other comments from the commissioners? All right. Hearing none. Are there any other questions from Mr. Twain, the petitioners? If not, then we'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas, you have a comment?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna do this, I guess I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Can we do that? We'll start, do you mind to start?
Sure.
Okay, let's, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantino?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Yes.
Okay, and I'm a no. So that means three to two. That means the motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Well, we still have to go to the city commission.
Well, that's true. So we're recommending it.
Thank you.
All right.
And just to say, I know the neighborhood.
Thank you. All right. All right. Let's move on to the next item. This is a site plan, SP 23-01-03. This is the former Kmart Training Center at 3,000 West 14 Mile. And we'll give a second for the room to clear and then Mr. Twain will give us an introduction. Do we need to take, do you want to take a break, a quick break?
Well, I'm gonna.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, that's my first.
I understand. People get excited.
All right, so recall the meeting to order, and we'll...
I have Mr. Twing introduce the next petition.
Okay. This site in particular is at the corner of Coolidge Highway and West 14 Mile Road. The site is zone general industrial. There's an existing building on site that the petitioner is proposing to convert to self-storage units, as well as add basically four other additions to it. The existing building is approximately 121,500 square feet. Between the additional buildings, they're adding a little over 27,100 square feet of new building area, and they're depicted on the site plan as, you can see as Building B. There is a C, D, and E at various locations of the site, which used to be, or is currently, parking spaces. So, there's approximately 148,000 square feet of building area when it's completed. That includes some 731 storage units. They're required, under that number of units, to have 18 parking spaces under the zoning ordinance. They're providing 26, so they're in compliance with that. In terms of the staff write-up, the first one is related to Building B, which was an original plan that was submitted to the fire marshal and approved by the fire marshal regarding turning radiuses for these emergency vehicles. Building B was 160 feet by 29 feet. The plan that's in front of you this evening has, it's slightly bigger, so we're recommending, in order to maintain that approved turning radius, that that building go back to the previously reviewed and approved dimensions that the fire marshal reviewed. Item two is in regards to that the storage, self-storage facility comply with provisions for the operation of set facilities, and that there's no commercial or other business activities, and no storage of toxic, flammable, or hazardous material. Item three is in regards to the height-to-width ratios on Buildings B, D, and E, which are the new, longer buildings. And that's really at the discretion of the planning commission, is that you're comfortable with those buildings. Terms of landscaping, there is a landscaping plan in the proposed for the project. Based on what was removed, in terms of inches and trees, the difference is approximately 34 inches, which could either require the payment of a tree replacement fee of $6,800, according to the city commission's fee schedule, or potentially planting 14 additional trees of at least a caliper of two and a half inches. The remaining contingencies regarding any paving will be in accordance with the city engineer standards. The lighting, as proposed, would be in compliance with the city standards. And then anything regarding signage and performance bond and other codes are standard contingencies. Excuse me. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions from Mr. Twing? All right. Hearing done. I think I'll call the petitioners forward. This is not a public hearing, this is site plan. So, let's call the petitioners forward, and tell us about your site plan.
My name is Guido Gansford for Rand Construction, on behalf of the petitioner, Guido Architects, and the owner as well. Some did it pretty well. I want to add that we have added as much landscaping as will fit on the site, with the overall canopy spacing of it. So, there really isn't any more square footage to put any more trees. There's a little space over on Coolidge, and that would be directly over underground detention. So, we don't want to put a tree right on top of that. So, that's really the only available space left, as far as, in the landscape area, fully, full amount of trees we can possibly provide. As far as underground detention, we've added basically four tenths of a mile worth of five-foot diameter piping underground to manage the stormwater, better than it's currently managed on-site, based on the updated stormwater standards. The new building changes the old kind of forgotten Kmart Training Center into an updated revitalized use for this corner. Especially talking about adaptive reuses, that's specifically what we're trying to do here. Just a front cladding on the main, larger, taller warehouse area in the back, to bring it up to normal current energy standards. And there is a ramp going up to those, because, right currently, it is a dock-high building, so there's no real access from the ground level to be able to access that. And if this were to remain as the current building, that's, you'd be getting mostly semi-truck traffic, and stuff like that. So, this is a lot lighter trafficked type of use compared to those, compared to a warehouse and distribution type center. And with that lighter use of cars, that's why the majority of the parking lot area has had these additional drive-through storage units, because otherwise, it would be relatively vacant. It would just be asphalt parking lot that would never get used. So, that's the overall gist of the project. Brand-new windows on the project. Overall, the whole office area, that's the lower, the 20,000-square-foot section's going to be totally renovated, extensively redone to update it. And the back area, which is pretty well maintained on the inside, just pretty much gets a fit out of drive-through units all the way through. All climate-controlled on the inside. And the exterior buildings, the drive-up buildings, would not be. Happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Are there questions for the petitioner, Mr. Ellison?
Yeah, I think I finally found it on the drawing. I was trying to find out what kind of screening you had along 14 Mile Road in front of Building, I guess it's Building E. But it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, the six-foot-high decorative fence, right along 14 Mile Road.
Along, right there.
Yeah, it's named farther up on the drawing to the right, but if I follow the fence around, I should make sure it's the same fence. So, that front edge in front of Building E.
Yeah, that falls around to that.
Yeah, it does, yeah. It does date the fence. And if I look at the landscape plans, we're also designating a bunch of trees and bushes. And what I might concern is, the visual aspect from 14 Mile Road, looking across and looking into all those hundreds of garage doors, that really are not really appealing. But if you've got a mass behind a six-foot wall and landscaping, I think it'll probably be all right.
I think almost to the utmost detriment of not being able to see their units. Yes, they have to pretty much screen.
And just don't paint the doors so obnoxious colors.
Under review.
Okay, so I got it, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Number one, I want to talk about the trees. What type of trees are you planting on the site?
So, there's the list on the landscaping plan, which is one right above this one.
Right there.
Oh, no, one right above that.
Yeah, there it is.
That's one right above, yep. That's the bottom half of the site, but the top half of the site has the list.
Okay, well, I didn't read the list, so I'm asking you. What kind of trees are you...
It's large deciduous trees, as well as quite a bit of evergreen trees as well.
Okay, do those trees grow?
They're, right now, they're shown as their mature canopy.
Yeah, but they are the type of trees that grow, yes?
Understood, yes.
Okay. Next question. Did you read the lighting ordinance?
It, word by word, I would say no.
Okay, I'll remind you that your lights need to be shielded. The light source is not supposed to be seen from the right away, and that's supposed to glare. And I only mention that because I see the light units that you have on there, it looks like the wall sconces might be shielded, but I'm not so sure about the pole lights. And certainly, talking about the relationship to 14 Mile and Coolidge, not supposed to have glaring lights that you can see from the road.
That's totally...
And it's not very easy, it's not very hard to make it happen that way. That's all I want to say.
Yep.
Okay? Other questions or comments? Okay. There's no public hearing, so... Any questions from Mr. Twing? All right, is there a motion? I see thinking, but not a motion.
What can you make of them tonight? Come, guys. Sharon and I have already done our turn.
Yeah, somebody else step up.
I proved the minutes.
Up to you.
I feel bad doing it as mayor. It's all that Woody have the honor.
Go ahead.
I'll move, we accept the site plan as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, segue with Mr. Gantina. Any further discussion?
That would be with the contingencies.
Contingency.
Yes, with the contingency, stated contingency. Oh, wait a minute. I do want to, one of the contingencies I do want to address, I asked a question about the trees. There's 87 new trees, they're 34 inches shy. So, I'm thinking, once these trees grow a half an inch, they're going to cover the 34 inches. And I would say, for my money, I would like to see that waived, and just accept the trees. That's what I would advocate for. In other words, in that, my position was, I would not want them to have to pay $6,800 for trees that are going to grow in a couple of years.
Is there a reason why you made that specification too?
Because it's in here.
What's the ordinance?
Oh, it's the ordinance.
Yeah. It was in the, I should have mentioned this before. It was in the contingencies, and it doesn't actually say what has to be done. It just says, according to the, you know, city commission's tree replacement, this is what could happen. And I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Twing can clarify. What is that contingency? Does that contingency require...
Contingency four is, you can accept the plan as presented, as depicted on the landscape sheet. Or because the tree removal, they're not in compliance with the number of inches of trees that are to remove, they can either plant more, or they got to pay the fee.
Okay, my motion is to accept it as submitted. No changes.
Okay. And there's a segue with Mr. Gantina. Any further discussion? I'm only, again, not supported in protest, that I don't think they should have to pay the $6,800 or add the trees, but...
I'm inclined to agree with you, by the way.
Woody?
Who are you?
Trees grow, that's my point. The trees grow, and there's 87 new trees.
If they're much further away, I mean, I understand they're taking 34 trees out, but they're adding 87 trees. And to Gary's point, you know, rather quickly will be a net positive benefit in terms of what we're trying to accomplish with that ordinance. I'm sort of inclined to not penalize them for trying to do the right thing. But, the motion is on the floor, the way it is.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I appreciate that, but, you know, there are some decent-sized trees that are going to be removed too, and, you know, they could figure out a way to keep them if they wanted to as well. So, that's why we have the ordinance in there too, to go, to kind of incentivize to do it. But they made a choice with this plan, and...
But to your point, they could remove one or two fewer trees, still add the same number of trees, and probably be in compliance at some point, right? Because it all comes down to their...
It's very easy for you guys, if you guys want to add an amendment to my motion, that's fine. That way, you get what you want, and I'm not going to change my motion. I may support your amendment, but we can sit here and argue this all night, and these guys are waiting for a decision.
We'll probably hit up $6,800 at a time.
Under, yeah, under what I, how I understand the rules, a chair cannot make a motion. I can second, but I can't make a motion.
I disagree with that now, but I understand what you're saying. So, this guy, I'm not going to make the motion, I already...
I will move to amend the motion on the floor.
I'll support his amendment.
To waive the $6,800.
All right.
This is all procedural, Gary. We got to do it right.
So, now we have a motion that is on the table to amend, supported by Mr. Ellison. We have to vote on the amendment. The amendment is to strike the requirement in contingency four, and accept the plan as presented, without contingency four.
That's what I thought I moved.
Yes. Well, that's what he, he moved it, you seconded it. So, now we have to vote on it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay. If we're ready to vote, all those in favor of the amendment...
I'd like to discuss it.
Sure.
Give my head. I'll just say, like, I appreciate it, not trying to read your pocketbook. The trees are super important in this community. And whether it's a half an inch, I can make a lot of jokes right now, but I won't, because it's 11:09 PM.
Yeah.
You know, it all matters, and we have the ordinance in place, because we have to preserve our canopy. And, you know, regardless, if this goes up or down, I'd hope you, you know, have that commitment to our canopy here.
All right, I'm going to, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to move for the vote, or I'm going to call for the vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
There's two no's, and three ayes. So, the amendment passes. So, now the motion on the table is to approve... So, now the motion on the table is to approve the site plan as submitted with the contingencies except contingency number four. Okay?
Well, no, we retain number four, we remove the second paragraph of number four.
That's correct, yes.
I have a statement to make.
Go right ahead.
Your honorable chair?
Yes.
I'll be supporting it even though I didn't vote for the amendment. Overall, it's still a good plan, so.
All right. Yes, I think it's a good plan. I agree with that. All right. Any further discussion on the motion on the table as amended? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to call for the vote by voice again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, motion passes, site plan's approved with the contingencies, congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
What happened to my, well, I lost my agenda.
You're like a canopy killer.
I lost my agenda. There it is.
Where are the iguanas?
Okay. Next sort of business is other business. Do we have other business, Mr. Twing?
I do not.
We're still in the meeting.
All right. Before we seek an adjournment motion, I know we've had a long meeting, but give the commissioners an opportunity to make any statements that they'd like to put on the record at this time.
I'd just like to say it's a privilege and honor to serve with all of you.
All right, very good. That's on the record. Okay, we'll close that part of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Support.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we're adjourned, thank you very much.
Good night, Peter.